Okay, Renee, you got this.
We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Rosa City School Board meeting for April 28th, 2021, and we will stand together and say the Pledge of Allegiance together. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. It is vulnerable with liberty and justice for all. And so by way of grounding, as I like to do, is I just want to make sure that we appreciate, I want everyone to know how much the board appreciates the communication with us, no matter what it is, because you believe it and we want to hear it. And we thank you for being upfront. We think you, we thank you for being passionate. We thank you for everything that you say to us, and please know that we read everything that is sent to us or that we hear. And we take it into consideration. So please don't ever think that we're not listening. If you're not getting exactly what you want or what you want, please know that we are really reflective, and actually, a lot of these letters just hit us, hit us right here in the heart and in the gut, too. And, and we're trying, you know, we're trying to do our best. And I think that's what everyone is doing. Parents and staff and other stakeholders, board and district management. Everyone's trying to move forward in this uncertain time. So I just thank you because someone wrote to me at school a while ago about the diversity, that it's really key and how we work together is key. And so I just want to point out, we just, the board just took a quick, little five, 10-minute break right now. And I ran and I saw the television and I saw in the House of Representatives, we're getting ready for a speech by President Biden. And up front, where there usually were, were men, two women. And that would be Vice President Kamala Harris from Oakland and Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi from San Francisco. So just saying, this is a sea change, right? And just, we've been through a lot. So let's get on with it tonight. For C2 and C3, there are no actions taken in closed session and nothing considered for action in open session. And board members, do we have any statements of abstention? Seeing none. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? And that would be, Clark Flores?
Yeah, I'd like to move item E11 to E2.
Do you have a reason for that, sir?
Yeah, you know, our parents and community really want to talk about our return to school. And I think our discussion about summer school and, you know, going back to summer school, it's, it's really important for our community. So I think we should hear that first.
I would agree. All right, we'll do that. And are there any members of the public, would anyone like Diane?
Yes, I'd like to pull item F5.
Just pull it?
Yep, pull it. And there's one contract within F5 that I want to pull.
To talk about on its own?
To pull completely. So, yeah, so I'll talk about it when we get to the consent.
Okay. And are there any members of the public right now who would like to speak to any of the consent items? And we will make sure we pull those to, for you to speak to it then. Moderator, would you like to reiterate that?
Sure. So if there are any members of the public that want to speak about items on the F part of the agenda only is what we're talking about at this time, then we'll be able to pull those in advance. I see a couple of hands, so I'm going to lower them. And now we only want hands raised if there's something in the consent items that you would like to make public comment on. And if your hand is raised, we'll be asking which item that is to be pulled. Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Item F5, approval of contracts, please.
Okay, thank you. And that will mean a comment at that time when we get to that part of the agenda. And Tammy Afonso.
Item F5.
Thank you very much. And I see no other hands raised. President Fong.
All right, thank you very much. No other adjustments to the agenda. I see. None. Okay, great. It is time for C6, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And given the anticipated number of items on our agenda tonight and the interest in these items, we are going to be limiting it to no more than one hour per item. And individual comments will be limited to two minutes tonight. Including public comment.
Okay, so this is the time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So that means this would not be the time to comment on, for example, the start of school schedule. So if you want to make public comment on an item that's not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time, and you will be limited to two minutes. And we hope to have a clock running, so you'll be able to follow along. And our first comment is Bev Barron.
I'm sorry, I had to find my unmute button. It's an ongoing challenge to do that. My name is Bev Barron. I'm the music teacher at Steel Lane Elementary School. Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and board members. Tonight, I'm going to be one of several speakers talking about the importance of supporting the positions of elementary physical education and music teachers who create a community of caring learners, being that we teach all grades in addition to interacting with all students and all other adults on campus. The PE and music teaching programs came out of the 1982 teachers' strike. General education teachers wanted, needed, and deserved their two hours of planning time. With the exception of two people who were hired to do the job at that time, few had teaching credentials in PE or music. I have one colleague who was hired to teach music, PE, and art with her general education credential. And that's just one example. Prior to about 10 years ago, elementary PE and music teachers received no planning time at all. We currently receive one hour per week, broken down into two 30-minute segments. We see anywhere from 600 to 1,000 students per week in grades one through six. We are in a unique position in that we get to watch our students grow and thrive within our areas of expertise. We know exactly where they left off the year before, so we know exactly where to begin at the beginning of the next school year. One of our asks is that we be afforded the same two hours of planning time so that we may, may, may more effectively serve our students. We all hold credentials specific to our fields. Better connections and relationships improve student performance in all areas of the general curriculum. We are so fortunate right now that we have only credentialed music and PE teachers who have extensive training and certifications in their fields. Therefore, our ask for equitable planning time, besides being widely and deeply felt, is a reasonable ask. Others will be discussing this topic. I hope you will hear what we are saying about why we need to be considered equally and equitably with our general education colleagues at the elementary level. Thank you for listening and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Next is Nikki. Nikki, if you could please state your full name for the record and then also keep an eye on that two-minute clock. Thank you. And I'm going to promote Nikki to panelist so she can comment.
My name is Nikki Kumisaka. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, good evening, Dr. Kitamura and school board members. My name is Nikki Kumisaka, and I'm a PE teacher at Slater Middle School. I am here tonight to support my elementary PE and music colleagues. I would just like to acknowledge that I've heard these teachers being called prep teachers and specialists for many years now. I have often wondered why these teachers hold credentials, some even master's degrees, just as their fellow colleagues at both the elementary and secondary levels. So why are they not being referred to as PE and music teachers? We all specialize in an area, but we are not all called specialists. I do hope, as a district across the board, we can get rid of the past names and start from here, calling them what they are, PE and music teachers. I also want to emphasize that they are valuable assets to our district. They lay the groundwork, provide the foundation and skills through their teaching, both physically and musically, to their early developing students. We, at the middle school level, notice what they have instructed to their students prior to them coming to us. We see the work that they have put in to prepare their students based on their performance, knowledge of the subject, and their skills and concepts. It is evident that the students have acquired a solid start to having an understanding of physical fitness and music appreciation. I do hope that you will support my elementary PE and music colleagues when it comes time to negotiate the contract. Please be sure and keep them in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kristin Colegrove. Kristin, are you there? Well, Kristin, we cannot hear you at this time, so we're going to take another comment. And please raise your hand if you'd like to do public comment, and we'll get back to you again. Thanks. Next will be Marla Tusa.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and school board members. My name is Marla Tusa, and I am also an elementary music teacher at Proctor Terrace Elementary School. And tonight, I'm going to be one of several speaking about the importance of supporting the positions of elementary PE and music teachers who create a supportive community of caring learners. I want to point out the overarching benefits of PE and music programs through the lens of social-emotional learning. As school-wide teachers, we have the privilege to connect our school community together in meaningful ways. Being that we teach all grades, interact with all students, and all other adults on campus, our position naturally lends itself to deep and meaningful connections with the school community. PE and music have the power to enhance learning in almost every context and content area, but particularly SEL. In other words, music and PE cheers us up. And right now, much of our SEL instruction is focused on just giving our students strategies to feel better, less afraid, less bored, less anxious. Music and PE boost not only the mood, but also self-esteem, sense of purpose, while alleviating feelings of stress and depression. So when social-emotional learning is successfully happening, students are more likely to cooperate, more likely to play with kids they don't know well and who are not like them, and they're more likely to help others. So in order for our PE and music team to continue successfully enhancing the social and emotional lives of our learners, please consider our request for a little more planning time and consider limiting the number of students in our classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment on a non-agenda item is Karen Wagner.
Good evening. Let me turn off my phone. Hold on. Okay, so my name is Karen Wagner, and I'm a classified employee for 17 and a half years, and it's been my passion and pleasure and mission to work with students and teachers and fellow staff members. I wouldn't have been able to do this if it wasn't for my husband's salary. You see, my income is supplemental for my family. You have to be able to afford to work at this district, and most people cannot afford to work here. Not everyone has a significant other to carry them. We work hard, and we all deserve a livable wage. We appreciate your consideration in working with our classified employees. And we've always been there for you guys, so we look forward to just continuing on with the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sophie Decansy or Decansky.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Kitamura and the school board. My name is Sophie Decansky, and I'm a longtime substitute teacher in the Santa Rosa City Schools. I'm here today in support of the classified staff and their negotiations for better pay. I've worked in every school in the district, but primarily in the high schools. I'm always impressed by the teachers I work for and by their teaching colleagues who are great sources for quick questions and clarifications. But my greatest support system is the classified staff. Having the main office, a phone call away, has been a lifesaver. Whether dealing with emergencies or other issues, great or small, I can count on the main office to help me quickly. I've also benefited from knowledgeable instructional assistants who are experts on their classrooms and know their students well. Many of these positions now stand vacant. I regularly interact with helpful and efficient attended staff, health techs, and library techs, kind and respected campus supervisors and student advisors, and the incredibly hard-working custodial staff. I've seen classified staff arrive earlier than anyone else and stay later. In addition, I see how they often serve as stable adult figures in the lives of students, acting as listeners, comforters, encouragers, and mentors. As a visiting teacher to these campuses, I'm struck by the enormous contributions of these staff members. The schools could not function or thrive without them. I urge the school board to honor their work by paying them living wages, Sonoma County living wages. This will ensure that qualified people are drawn to these important jobs and that, once hired, they can afford to keep them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening. My name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I'm an educational technology teacher for Santa Rosa City Schools. I'm calling to talk, or calling in, calling in to talk to you about two different things. One is in support of our elementary music and elementary PE teachers. The Santa Rosa City Schools collective bargaining agreement with Santa Rosa Teachers Association, also called our contract, currently has class-sized limits for kindergarten, first through sixth, seventh through 12th teachers, including PE teachers, our special ed teachers, our home and hospital teachers, our SLPs, and pretty much everybody else that works in our bargaining unit, with the exception of our elementary music and elementary PE teachers. I know for a fact that last year before the pandemic, one of our elementary teachers saw nearly 200 students in one day in an elementary setting. It was more than half the school. That's not acceptable. We need to do better. The second reason why I'm calling to speak in with you is, on January 27th, three months ago, Santa Rosa Teachers Association sunshined our collective bargaining agreement proposals for our contract negotiations. Our negotiating team agreed to set aside negotiating on that in order to finish our MOUs for return to school and for summer school. We have been patiently waiting for a response from Santa Rosa City Schools on any and all of the, or sorry, my understanding is that we're still waiting for a response from Santa Rosa City Schools on any and all of the contract language that was submitted to Santa Rosa City Schools as part of that sunshine. I really hope that you will prioritize finishing negotiations with Santa Rosa Teachers Association and CSEA before the school year ends. Nobody wants to be negotiating over the summer. We have enough to do to get ready for the fall with all the changes that will be required. Thank you very much. I look forward to hearing what your proposals are when we have a tentative agreement.
Thank you. And the next comment is from someone listed as Moto. If you could please state your full name for the record. All right, I'm going to promote you to panelist. Mr. Juarez, one moment, please. We do have a translator in the English channel, Ms. Ronan, and she will be able to translate. Thank you.
Señor Juarez, si tenemos traducción aquí en el canal de inglés y si nos da un momentito si vamos a traducir.
Perfecto, gracias.
A usted.
Ms. Ronan, would you please translate? Well, perhaps she doesn't hear right now.
Dan, are you there? I see you're unmuted, Dan.
He's in the Spanish channel right now.
Okay. And can we see, is Marcela over here? Is that, is she interpreter, too?
She is. She is on the panel. Perhaps she stepped away from the microphone for just a moment.
Okay, um, I believe, no, okay. All right, let's, let's go ahead. Mr. Juarez, and we will get some translation for you. So go ahead, Mr. Juarez.
Okay, primeramente buenas noches, doctora Kitamura, presidente, señora Fong, y miembro de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Adrian Juarez, y soy el presidente del comité de DILAC.
Ladies, on behalf of Adrian Juarez, DILAC president.
Hoy quiero hacer dos comentarios.
Two comments tonight?
Respecto a los trabajadores conocidos como clasificados.
The first one is for the classified workers.
Quiero agradecer su arduo trabajo durante este año en que han sido trabajadores esenciales.
I want to express our gratitude for the enormous work that they have done as essential workers.
Y que se han dedicado hoy a los aspectos de este distrito.
The, el sonido no está muy bueno. The sound is not very clear.
Quiero agradecer su arduo trabajo durante este año en que han sido trabajadores esenciales y que se han dedicado a apoyar todos los aspectos de este distrito.
And the support that they have dedicated to the district during this year.
Quiero agradecer en especial a las felicitadoras, a familiares que han hecho tanto por mantenernos informados durante esta pandemia.
A particular thank to the family engagement workers that have supported and bridged the families and the district during the pandemic time.
Y más que nada por todo el trabajo que están haciendo actualmente con el examen de inglés, ElPAC.
For the enormous work that they are doing with the ElPAC testing right now.
Entiendo que no han podido tener negociaciones por tanto que han hecho este año, pero como padres de familia esperamos y puedan llegar a un acuerdo con ellos pronto.
I understand they have not been able to be present of the negotiations for all the work that they have, but wish nothing but the best for this outcome.
Espero y pueden llegar a un acuerdo donde sus salarios reflejen el compromiso que cada uno de ellos tienen con la educación de nuestros hijos.
I freely hope you can find an agreement with a salary that will reflect the enormous commitment that they have shown to our families and our children.
También espero que así como se les han dado o se le han pagado bonos a los maestros que están haciendo instrucción simultánea, que así también estos trabajadores esenciales reciban un bono en reconocimiento por su labor.
And I hope that as some teachers have received bonuses for working simultaneously, that these workers will receive bonuses, too.
Tenemos que trabajar juntos y apoyarnos todos por el bien académico de todos los estudiantes de este distrito.
We have to work together and support each other for the well-being of our students in our district.
También quiero ser un comentario que está, que está en la agenda, ¿verdad? La escuela de verano.
I also want to comment about the summer school that is included in the agenda tonight.
Quiero pedir que consideren todas las necesidades de nuestros hijos en la planificación de estos programas.
I want you to consider all the needs of our students when you plan these programs.
Pido que sean justos y ofrezcan en su plan de trabajo oportunidades para programas de aprendizaje a distanciamiento.
I want to request fairness in this planning and for you to consider all the needs of our students during this planning.
Para los estudiantes que permanecieron aprendiendo a distanciamiento, para que no sigan quedando atrás académicamente.
For all the students that went behind or got stuck during the distant learning, so they don't continue in that way.
No todas las familias están listas para que sus hijos regresen a clases presenciales. Sé que ofrecerán programas que serán ofrecidos por agencias y organizaciones fuera de nuestro distrito.
Not all the families are ready to come back to education in person. And I know that there are agencies or entities that will be contracting to provide educational services.
Y espero que tengan conciencia y corjen a nuestros hijos con programas que ofrecen ustedes.
Can you repeat that? Puede repetir eso, señor?
Y espero que tengan conciencia y corjen a nuestros hijos con programas que ofrecen ustedes.
And I appeal to your conscience to make sure that you cover all of these students and the needs that they have.
Algunos padres tienen que navegar usando herramientas las cuales no conocen para solicitar servicios que no son ofrecidos por nuestro distrito, y esto puede desalentar a padres para no solicitar estos programas.
Please keep in mind that there are many parents that need to navigate a system that they don't know how, that they don't have the tools to navigate, to request services that are not necessarily provided by the district, and they don't have much support or guidance.
Espero y continúen teniendo el interés de todos nuestros estudiantes al frente cuando tomen decisiones. Gracias.
I hope you keep in front of you the interest, the needs of these students, all the students, when you plan and organize these programs.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juarez. I'd like to ask if any of the board members want to maybe come, I'm sorry, but if there were some comments made by Mr. Juarez that really some of the people who he was speaking of should hear. Is there anybody that, and if you don't, it's okay, but I just was wondering if any of our board members who also speak Spanish might want to, you know, fill in anything that might have not gotten said. Just the money, Eddie?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say this in Spanish, pero presidente Juarez, si puede regresar para el artículo en la agenda donde vamos a hablar sobre los programas del verano, parte de tu comentario tocó en ese tema, entonces si puede regresar para darnos sus comentarios otra vez. Creo que fueron muy importantes y me gustaría escucharlo otra vez, pero durante ese, esa parte de la agenda.
Sí, yo pienso que sí voy a estar, hice este comentario porque tengo un niño de dos años y él probablemente se quiere dormir temprano, y si no estoy, por lo menos le dé un comentario que lo tome en cuenta. Pero si él todavía no se duerme, voy a estar aquí esperando el tema con ansiedad.
I am aware of that. Please know that I have a two-year-old that does not go to bed if I am not with him. So I made the comment a little bit in advance, just in case that I cannot be present when you cover that theme. But if I am available... just in case that I cannot be present when you cover that theme, but if I am available, I will be happy to do it.
And just for context, I asked President Juárez to come back during the item where we will be discussing summer school programs because his comment was very important and I would like to hear it again when we reach that agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Juárez.
Thank you all, and that was Mr. Juárez, who is he is the president of our DILAC, our District English Learner Advisory Committee, so just to make that clear to our attendees. And we're back to public comment on non-agenda items, and the next comment is Eric Olson. And Eric also needs to be promoted to panelist to comment.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me? Thanks. My name is Eric Olson. I'm a music teacher in Santa Rosa City Schools and I have a unique perspective on the current amount of planning time that our elementary PE music teachers face. My first six years I was working at Montgomery High School where I was offered five hours a week to help plan four different classes for about 200 students. And then in my later years, I was able to move to a number of schools, Luther Burbank and Abraham Lincoln Elementary Schools, and there I was offered the opportunity to teach six separate classes or grade levels and over 250 students at each site, which is wonderful, but my prep time was cut down to one hour. So when you did the math, it was about 28 seconds per student versus at the high school where I had 200 students, it was about 90 seconds per student. It's a terrible metric, thinking about the number of seconds per student, but it's kind of the only way to quantify the sheer lack of time, and it's actually less than 2.5 times the amount of planning time I beginning. So it's, we always do everything we can to make sure that all of our students get all, get the best education they can get, staying late, working extra time, being sure that we're out there to connect with our families and students. And all we're asking for is the same amount of time that our other elementary colleagues get as well, so that we can become a part of that school, build that school culture and further all of the things that we're trying to do in this district. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jason Andrews. Jason, ¿estás ahí?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm going to be reading a message from a classified member from Slater Middle School. Her name is Alejandra, sorry, Maria Fajardo. She says, "First of all, I want to say hello to all the members of the school board and Dr. Kitamura, and thank you for all your hard work. We have gone through difficult times and we have learned to be stronger, and most of us have prayed for a better tomorrow. I recently moved from a family engagement facilitator to attendance tech. Working in these positions, I got to hear many sad stories from our families. Students losing their family members due to COVID, students and their families getting infected with COVID. I had people crying on the phone trying to explain to me why their kids were absent. Ninety percent of these calls were due to COVID-19. Either the whole family was infected, a family member passed away, or multiple members died of all this because of COVID. Meanwhile, all this was going on, I was working in my office, doing my job, and trying not to break down whenever I got these calls. I was also handing out Chromebooks, books, school supplies, setting up in-person appointments, and helping parents with school registrations. A lot of our parents didn't have access to illuminate, and we had to help them in person. My awesome Slater team was the first one to start running cohorts on site. I was helping with the first group Monday and Tuesdays, no COVID vaccine at the time, just wearing my mask and face shield, but wanting to help our families and students who needed a place to study. It was very hard in my situation because no matter how much I wanted to stay home and protect my two daughters and both of my parents, I'm also a single mother and my income was very much needed. I really believe that we are not paid enough. Our jobs involve so many more tasks that are not even in our job description. During 2020 and this current year, we risked our lives and our loved ones because we needed our jobs along with our income. I asked the school board to please consider our great work all classified personnel are doing. We are hard-working workers asking for better pay. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. The next public comment on a non-agenda item is Amber Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Amber Robinson and I'm a mom to a fourth grader at Hidden Valley Elementary School, and I have had the privilege of working for my son's school since he started TK. In my five years employed by the district, I can say I have met some of the hardest-working and kindest individuals ever. These people do everything they can for these kids, doing their best to keep them safe, keep them fed, keep them smiling, and keep them entertained. This staff went above and beyond the call of duty even before this pandemic hit. Since then, we have been asked to do so many more jobs and wear so many more hats, and we were some of the only staff required to be on-site. We were already stretched thin and doing our best, and this last year has tested everyone's limits. Classified staff has deserved a living wage for years now, but now the pressure is truly on. We need to be able to attract and retain these amazing people, and I feel like we are losing them to other employees who are willing to pay what they know their staff is truly worth. What kind of a message are we sending? Currently, you can take almost any entry-level job in Santa Rosa and at least make 1550 an hour. Most employers are starting at 17 or 18. Why can't we give our staff what they are truly and undoubtedly deserve? A wage that if they needed to, they would actually be able to pay all of their bills or not have to stress about an emergency cost coming up. I couldn't afford to live here on my own with my son. That should never have to be a worry for me or anyone else, but it is. Please, I implore you to make the right decision and come together to create a competitive livable wage before it's too late. The district can become desirable and can attract people to all of these open classified positions if we just make a change, and that change starts with you. Please help us to make a positive move forward. Help us to fight for what we know is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Allen.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and members of the school board. My name is Linda Allen and I'm an elementary PE teacher this year at Still Lane and Lincoln. As you have heard tonight from one of our music teachers, the original prep teachers consisted of two credentialed music teachers and zero credentialed PE teachers. At that moment in time, it fit the need. Today, your elementary music and PE programs have developed into valuable pieces of SRCS students' educational journey. All of your music and PE teachers are fully credentialed with some holding masters. For all of us, teaching is not just a job, it's a passion. We have the pleasure of sharing our knowledge base, our enthusiasm with our kids, our kids. We strive to provide our students the very best educational experience that we can. We teach first through sixth grade at multiple sites. We develop strong connections with our students, even though we are often running quickly from one session to the next. We develop high-quality, age-appropriate lessons for each class and each grade level. At times, this has equated to 10 different class sessions in one day. Our students' PE classes happen rain or shine, in the hallways, under the overhangs, in the bright sunshine, in the shade of the trees when it's hot, on the courts when the field is wet, and so on. Flexibility is the key. We develop lesson plans in line with the California state standards. Our students experience familiar activities, and we also provide them with opportunities to experience activities that they have never attempted. Who knows where this will lead them? A scholarship, a lifelong love of some activity to help stay healthy. We develop a solid core of skills and knowledge from which they can continue to grow as they move through elementary to middle school and to high school and beyond. Equal prep time is important to provide our students the very best opportunity. Limiting the number of students in a day is key to allowing students to connect with us and build their confidence, their trust, and their skill. We simply want the same opportunities as our counterparts to provide the best educational experience that we gain. Thank you for your time this evening and your consideration of our thoughts.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Williams.
Hi, ¿puedes escucharme?
Yes.
All right. Hi, I'm Sarah Williams and I am a music teacher at Biella Elementary and Slater Middle School. I wanted to speak about supporting our PE music teachers and getting the same amount of prep time as other credential teachers, student caps, and overages. Providing these things to PE and music teachers will benefit the quality of these programs and students' educations. An excellent music and PE program contributes to the social and emotional wellness of all students. If elementary music and PE teachers are given the amount of prep time that other credential teachers get, it allows students to receive a more well-rounded, fulfilling education. Given the stress of this year, I've had countless students of all ages express to me how grateful they are to have music and PE and how it has improved their mental health and helped them cope with the craziness of this world. Our music and PE teachers are invaluable to the survival of our students as we navigate into the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next comment on a non-agenda item is Pam Krbowski.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and members of the school board. My name is Pam Krbowski and I am a dedicated and hard-working PE teacher at Brook Hill and Biella Elementary. Tonight, I'm going to be one of several speaking about the importance of supporting the positions of elementary physical education and music teachers who create a community of caring learners, being that we teach all grades, interact with all students, and all other adults on campus. I have had the pleasure of our very own Jill McCormick coming to one of my PE classes while on the blacktop prior to COVID, as well as during the pandemic and having to teach online. I was extremely happy to have her in both situations to get a glimpse of what my job entails. I wanted to point out that all other teachers in our district have student caps, so we are asking for the same equal treatment as all other teachers. Specifically, at the secondary level, PE teachers have a cap of 185 students in a day, and teachers other than PE have 165. First through sixth grade is 32 students. If those numbers are exceeded, teachers are compensated. We are asking for the same compensation that other teachers get when there are overages. A couple of years ago, I must admit, I was exhausted at the end of the day, the end of the week. I sat down and calculated my numbers, and one day I had 10 half-hour classes and saw 252 students. Another day, I had 10 half-hour classes and saw 260 different students. Due to this, it was challenging to connect with students, and don't we strive for connection over contact, onward content? By having this many students and having to hustle them in and out of class, it is a struggle to build relationships. The benefits to having a cap on how many students we see in a day is developing a better connection with our students, increasing student buy-in, and overall better student performance. I love my job, I love working with my hundreds of students, and I know the benefits of physical fitness. I do hope you will take into consideration adopting these pages I have spoken of in the contract when it comes to negotiations. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next comment on a non-agenda item is Wendy Albaranda Neymar. Wendy, ¿estás ahí?
¿Puedes escucharme ahora?
Ahora podemos, gracias.
Hello, members of the board and Dr. Kitamura. At the end of this, of my speech, I would translate it in Spanish. My name is Wendy Albaranda Neymar. I've been working for the school district for 19 years. I have not, if it had not been for my husband's income and my daughter's, I would not be able to live and work here in Santa Rosa. I am one of your essential workers. I love my job, but without a living wage, I fear that I will have to keep on working for many years. I am one of the employees that lives paycheck to paycheck. Please help us in our negotiations. Thank you for your time and for listening. Hola, miembros de la junta y doctora Kurumara. Mi nombre es Wendy Alvarande Neymar. He estado trabajando para el distrito durante 19 años. Si no fuera por los ingresos de mi marido y de mi hija, no podría vivir y trabajar aquí en Santa Rosa. Soy uno de los trabajadores esenciales. Me encanta mi trabajo, pero sin un salario digno, me temo que tendré que seguir trabajando por muchos años. Soy uno de los miembros empleados que viven de cheque por cheque, pago por pago. Por favor, ayúdenos en nuestras negociaciones. Gracias por su tiempo y por escuchar.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us know you were going to translate that as well. That's very helpful. Next is Elaine. Elaine, if you could please state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Elaine Strel. And the treatment of classified staff as less than is pervasive throughout the district. It starts at the top from the district level and continues down through site administrators, teachers, and other staff. Putting negotiations off for this past year is a prime example that shows classified staff are not valued. We are being pushed aside and ignored. Some people make and voice their assumptions about classified staff, which aren't typically true or kind. Many put us in a box and are genuinely surprised when we master a task. Although a living wage is of the utmost importance, there are other important issues that need to be addressed. Having fair and equitable treatment, to be treated respectfully, to be seen, heard, and treated as a valuable part of the system. On numerous occasions in the past 28 years, I have, that I've worked for Santa Rosa City Schools, I have personally experienced belittling, bullying, being disrespected, being talked down to, being ignored, and intimidation. But I have also worked with amazing individuals and created lasting friendships. There are so many wonderful people that work at Santa Rosa City Schools, but the climate of inequality for classified staff is a real thing and has to change. We are all humans and deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Hodson.
Hello, good evening, Superintendent Dr. Kitamura and members of our school board. My name is Nicholas Hodson and I am on the award-winning elementary music team here at Santa Rosa City Schools. Tonight, I'm going to be one of several speaking about the importance of supporting the positions of elementary physical education and music teachers who create a community of caring learners, being that we teach all grades in addition to interacting with all students and all other adults on campus with a complete package. Students served are served the best education when teachers have the time to prepare for their class. Or in the case of PE and music, this is eight to 10 classes a day for a total of over 200 students and serving the entire grade's one through three, one through six population of a school site in a week. Making copies, moving necessary equipment, individually grading and preparing lessons, and of course, reflecting on those lessons takes time for all of those students. Grade level teachers may find it hard to believe that we only are granted one hour a week for these tasks. We want a chance to make those ever more important connections with our students. The equitable solution here is to simply grant the same opportunities for making meaningful connections with students to teachers of other subjects at the elementary level, not just grade level teachers. Please also remember that if you call one of us a teacher, you should call all of us teachers. If we are specialists, then all the teachers are specialists because it takes a specific credential and a skill set to do what every teacher does. We are creators of a community of caring learners, and we should be given the time to be that. Please remember that others will be discussing this topic. I'd like to thank you for your time and for listening this evening.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Kristen Colgrove.
¿Puedes escucharme ahora?
Sí, podemos.
In October of 2019, I began the complicated and arduous task of reclassification. The application was lengthy and took hours of thoughtful insight. I made sure to turn it in on time on October 31st. My job description is comprised of 16 representative duties. In my application, I was able to list 62 duties. My job description was drafted and adopted on June 8th, 1982, 38 years ago. A lot has changed since. A lot has changed since then. A lot more has been put on the plate of an elementary school office manager, or ESOM, since 1982. Do you know that I do the job of up to nine staff members at the middle and high school level? I also manage the largest elementary school in the district. All ESOMs are classified the same regardless of whether they manage 125 students or 500. I am the principal's secretary, the registrar, the counseling secretary, the attendance clerk, the health tech, the student advisor, the business office manager, the campus supervisor, and the facilities coordinator. It is my job to be responsible for all of these positions. My meeting with the panel was held on January 14th. Per the guidelines, a copy of the panel's recommendation is to be sent to the employee within 10 working days of the panel's meeting date. I was not notified of the panel's recommendation until March 10th, 43 days after my meeting with the panel, and it was recommended that I be reclassified. It was not until March 18th during spring break that I was notified the superintendent had declined, or excuse me, had decided not to grant my right reclassification. It was made quite clear in the process that if we, as applicants, did not follow the guidelines and timeframes, that our applications would not be considered. Yet district personnel were permitted to break timeframes and send out documents with numerous mistakes therein. Because this happened just days after school had been closed indefinitely due to the COVID outbreak, I felt that I shouldn't complain about the way the process unfolded as we had much bigger fish to fry with the shift to distance learning. Now, 13 months later, I feel the need to speak up and let you know that this process was not handled fairly or professionally. All 20 classified staff who applied for reclassification were denied, even though every single one was recommended by the panel for reclassification. I implore you to investigate why this was allowed to happen. Never in my nearly 14 years with Santa Rosa City Schools have I felt more undervalued and unappreciated as I did when the superintendent denied my reclassification. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make a note that there are just a few hands left and those are the only hands we'll be able to take within our time period for this public comment session. Next is Kathy Bassini.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Good evening. I'm here to inform you that we have a crisis in the district. We have classified employees who aren't earning a living wage. They aren't able to feed their families properly. Three meals a day for them doesn't exist. They're having one and a half or two meals a day if they're lucky. They can't afford adequate healthcare or even, or adequate healthcare with a health and dental insurance that provided by the district. We have employees who would like to know what it's like to be respected and not be looked down upon just because they don't have a teaching or admin credential. Yes, classified employees are made to feel like they don't count. And just like a previous speaker, I have been harassed and bullied. We have employees who are working under exceptionally difficult conditions without any extra pay or recognition. Yet they are told to do their job and deal with it. We would like to ask for a living wage. Paying the teachers extra for this simultaneous teaching, which I fully support, they deserve it. They deserve even more than that. Creating an extra director position and a couple of years ago, giving the superintendent significant raises didn't seem to be an issue, yet haggling over the minimum raises that we receive is insulting. We aren't shown that we are valued or respected. Fortunately, we are getting some support from our teachers and counselors. At Piner, they've been wearing blue clothes and ribbons. They care about us. The late John Lewis, the representative from Georgia, who marched with Martin Luther King, said, "If you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, then you have an obligation to do something about it." That's why I'm here. I want to do something about it. John Lewis went on to say, "But say it with love and act with kindness." That is what I'm asking the board to do. I am asking you to give us a living wage and treat us with kindness and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lynette. And Lynette, could you state your full name for the record, please? And it looks like her hand is down. And so Sonia, nope, there's Lynette. All right, Lynette, would you please state your name for the rec? Lynette, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Now we can. And your name?
My name's Lynette Casey. Thanks for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board and Dr. Kitamora again. I'm calling tonight because I'm super sad about something that I heard recently that no classified employee had been nominated to the annual California Classified School Employee of the Year Award event. I guess the deadline was April 16th. I'm just, I'm hoping that doesn't mean what it sounds like it means. I'm sure it doesn't, but it comes across as though that there's no classified employees who should gain recognition for their efforts this past year of COVID. Not the cafeteria workers who handed out free and reduced meals every single day, rain or shine, to hundreds and hundreds of families. Not our custodial staff who've worked endlessly and tirelessly, day in and day out, to follow perplexed instructions on preparing our campuses for return to school. Not the human resource technicians who have sat by their telephones answering endless frantic calls from employees, calmly reassuring them of the unreassureable. Not our childcare workers who since the very beginning of COVID shutdowns had stood face-to-face in the way of this virus with our littlest children. These employees have spent their days tending to the young, young, young children, their innocent faces and their fears in a world of masked strangers. Not our special ed assistants who's been working side-by-side with their lead teachers. They show up every day with some of our most vulnerable students and yet they too are overlooked. Not our library technicians who repeatedly and continuously account for all academic materials for all of our 16,000 Santa Rosa City School students. These texts have literally moved hundreds of thousands of books in and out of buildings multiple times, directing parking lot distributions and collections, making certain that each book is accounted for and that each student has access to the proper material for each of their six classes. Not our family engagement workers who have persistently called our families, dialed disconnected numbers, been hung up on continually and given our family any assistance that may be necessary. Not our campus supervisors and student advisors who have spent their days doing literally whatever is asked of them, including fixing Chromebooks, making checking calls to families, driving to meet parents at their workplace to bring Chromebooks, handing out books and Chromebooks. Not our registers or our counseling secretaries who've been trained and retrained on how to process new classes, new hybrid report cards, new schoolhouse report cards, new IGP report cards, new graduation requirements.
Ms. Casey, sorry, but time is up.
Well, I just want to get the point across that not one single classified employee had been nominated to this award. And we've been there. We've suffered through this. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last comment, the last hand raised when we called the end of public comments is Sonia Aragorn.
Hi, this is Sonia Aragorn Castillo. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and see you. Now we can hear you.
Okay, I'm an employee at Hidden Valley. I work in support care. I'd like to express what my coworkers and myself do as an instructional assistant. We ensure the health and safety of our kids, assisting, teaching, faculty and classroom supervision, observation, and record-keeping. We help the kids with their homework assignments and projects. We also counsel our kids and parents regarding skill developments and improvements within the child. We, we have kids who need us to be helping them constantly. Therefore, I feel upset and disappointed because we are currently earning $13 an hour, an hour which I may add is below minimum wage. There's restaurants paying their employees $17 an hour, starting how? Is this possible when our jobs hold more responsibility as we are the guardians and teachers, helpers, role models, and even friends and guidance counselors of these kids who are our future generation? We hold a bigger responsibility altogether as we are in charge of guiding them through the, through this journey called life. Please help bring this, this issue to light and help end this unfairness. It has gone far too long and it is time to finally make this right. Together, we, we can have our voices heard as the school district just pushes this issue to the side and shuts us down. Thank you in advance for your time and any and every effort you may take to help resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last comment is Erin McCarthy.
Good evening. I have been an employee from Centers of City Schools for almost 30 years. And I wanted to give a little scenario. Friday is payday. And I know many of you on the panel have not necessarily had the concern of what am I going to do if I can't pay my bills? The cost of rent in this county is extremely high. And if you're making $14 an hour as an employee for Centers of City Schools and you maybe make $1,500, you have to pay $1,000 for rent, you've got $500 to feed your children, pay your PG&E bill, pay for gas money, your gas payment, I mean for your car payment. How do you have extra money for incidentals? Who has to worry about that? Not many of us on this panel. But I wanted you guys to think about how are our families going to, you know, our employees going to be paying for this? How can they take care of all this? We are going to be losing employees if we can't pay a living wage. I'm extremely concerned for our employees. And I just wanted you to think about how would you, how would you handle this? How would you handle not being able to pay your bills, put food on the table for your children? We need to make sure that we are paying a living wage. And a living wage is not necessarily $15 an hour in this county. So please consider come Friday, what a living wage really is for our employees and show them that they are valued. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no more hands raised.
Thank you, everyone who made comments tonight and took the time to be here with us in this meeting. We are going to take just a second to switch interpreters at this point.
I am back and I'm going to mute.
We're good?
Interpreters have been changed.
Thank you, everyone. We are moving on to reports. D1, we have, I hope, a report from CSEA Chapter 75, President Alfonso.
And if President Alfonso could raise her hand, it'll make it a little bit easier to move her into the meeting. President Alfonso, there you are. She should be heading into the meeting. There she is.
Okay. Now I have to shrink the window so I can see my statement. Okay. Tammy Alfonso's, President's, Chapter 75. Good evening, President Fong, Dr. Kitamora, school board members and student board member. As you have heard from our members this evening, we are the essential workers of Santa Rosa City Schools. We deserve to be recognized for our contribution to this district. Taking a look back at our district LCAP, Planned Actions and Services, which was developed, developed, developed by the stakeholders of the district and approved by the school board. Item H103, Recruit, Retain, and Train Highly Qualified Classified Staff, Teachers, and Administrators, and Provide a Competitive Salary and Health Benefits for Classified Staff, Teachers, and Administrators. Item H1, H116, Provide Professional Development to Classified Staff. Determine and Identify the Most Urgent Needs for All Classified Staff and Prepare a Professional Development Plan. Every staff member in these groups listed deserve to receive all the things listed in the goals. Sadly, we cannot put a check mark next to any of the goals for the classified employees of this district. In our upcoming negotiations, the question is, will we be able to put our first check mark on these LCAP goals for the essential classified employees of this district? Or will we once again put a check mark as we go out the door? Thank you for the time.
Thank you, President Alfonso. D2 is Santa Rosa Teachers Association, SRTA report. Do we have President Lyon here today?
He's heading over right now.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me all right? I'm going to go with no. Ask, ask, can you?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Try to get my headphones on and do it right. So if the airplanes go by, you only hear them a little bit. Good evening, everybody. I'm Will Lyon. I'm the president of Santa Rosa Teachers Association, representing over 900 of our employees. So I've got seven things. I'm going to try to go quick on all of them, but they're just all so important. I didn't want to skip them. First, we should celebrate our launch of the secondary hybrid this week. It was a Herculean effort by every single person I know. Parents, students, the teachers, of course, and the rest of our members in all kinds of different positions. CSEA, absolutely, district admin, site admin, every single person I know has got sore biceps from all the heavy lifting that they've done this week. And I'm grateful for it because for the social and emotional well-being of so many of our students, they need to be around other human beings. And it was touch and go for a while. It wasn't easy to do it and we should be proud that we got it done. So I want to thank everybody, every teacher, whether you're killing it or whether you're struggling, whether you took on extra students or simultaneous or whether or not you stayed to focus to build the relationships you have. Every single person I know deserves a pat on the back for this launch this week. Thank you for that. And the school board, I think I missed them, but I was just really grateful that we were able to launch. A second, I want, I, I understand that we have had number one candidate for our next superintendent, current assistant superintendent, Anna Trunell. And I don't think anybody was there except me and the board, but I did, I did go to that meeting where, you know, and gave a public comment. I did not know that she was a candidate when I gave that speech, but I had, I shared with the school board the SRTA goals and how closely they align with the SRCS goals and that we wanted a superintendent who would continue to work on those goals and would continue to work with SRTA in order to make our, our, our school district a destination district for students and staff. And I'm, I'm glad, I was relieved and excited when I heard that Anna Trunell was the leading candidate because I think she can do that. And she hasn't been around long. She's been around a little over six months, I believe. And I was, I was, I was going to use the term better a devil you know than one you don't, but she hasn't done anything devilish in six months. The opposite. She's been a really good partner with SRTA during really difficult times, getting ready for all the negotiating that happened in order to get that launch off the ground. So thank you for considering the SRTA needs and prioritizing a continued strong labor management relationship going forward. The next item is CSEA. You may notice some of us are wearing blue ribbons. I think I see one of them up on the school board there too. It does not take a blue ribbon commission to tell us that it's time to pay CSEA a fair wage right now. And the rumor mill suggests we're close. I don't know what that means. I just know that they're meeting on Friday. They got a chance. And the rumor mill suggests we're close. I don't know what that means. I just know that their meeting on Friday, they got a chance. Every single member in our organization will benefit when we can, when we can close the deal, get to yes on that and take care of those critical members. There isn't anybody else in any other unit that can do their job without CSEA. I follow the comments that they made. I'll leave those arguments. I won't add anymore, but I wanted to make sure that you know that's exactly where SRTA is at. And then right after that, SRTA is also negotiating. We really, this, this is the important part, and these are why they're connected and why we're, we're standing in solidarity with them. We really want to close the deal before graduation. And that's not easy to do under all the extra work that we're doing. But I think on our side, again, we're close enough, we got a shot, we really want to prioritize closing that deal. We do not want to come back in an August without a contract. We don't want all that extra pressure that comes with working out a contract. And again, that's, it's fair. There's 100 reasons why. I'll leave it there, but the shift is we really are, SRTA really pushing hard that we close the deal by graduation. So we can all leave and just relax and not have that much more stress. I think every single, again, a member of our organization benefit if we can close both of those deals. Lastly, the resolutions, I wanted to mention that there are lots of resolutions here. SRTA is supporting every single one of them. Of course, we need to honor our substitute teachers. This week is a strong lesson in how important that is. Of course, we want to honor all of the SRTA teachers. And I would add every single other one of them, too. I know some of them get another week all over the place, but we, every single SRTA member is important to this organization. And this is the week for teachers, nurses, absolutely, especially in a COVID year, you know. Jennifer Rodriguez, who's the nursing rep, she and I are on speed dial because we need medical expertise in order to do the work to keep our students safe. And one more, all classified employees, and as I've said, they're absolutely critical. Can you imagine what site administrators would do if they didn't have CSEA members to support them? The whole school, you couldn't open, you couldn't, you literally could not unlock the door and start one class without CSEA support. And that goes all the way up to the district office. So we absolutely want to recognize them and support them. And lastly, there, it's, there's a resolution to support sexual assault awareness. And it's the kind of thing you wish you wouldn't have to make a resolution about. And you do, because one in three girls and one in five boys are sexually assaulted before the age of eight. So I hate to end on a, on a, on a darker note there, but you're right to bring awareness to it. Every single person in this district who works here, whether you're working directly with students or indirectly, we have to be aware that our students come to us with trauma besides fires and floods and COVID. And you can't see it and you don't know it, and it helps us all to recognize that we need to support the, so I appreciate the the resolution and we support that. Lastly, I'll just, I'll mention May is hard pre-COVID. And so there, there are people right now, teachers and administrators and, you know, all of us that are really close to the, to the end of their rope, and they're just really hanging on. And this May is going to be as hard as all of them, plus COVID, plus negotiations. We are asking a lot from every single one of our members and our students and our parents and our families. And I just want to remind everybody, I remember probably the first 15 years of my career, I was surprised by how hard May was. It wasn't until, it wasn't until the 15th or 16th year that I realized how hard it was. So when we mentioned all those, all that other work we have to do on top of keeping our kids safe during COVID, I just make a a reminder that we need to treat each other and ourselves gently as we continue to do this work. And I'll repeat, our family mantra for this year has been, we can do difficult things. And I hope that that's something that we can all say to each other and, and we'll get through, we'll get through another tough year and grateful to be back. At least we get to finish it with actual kids in our classroom. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, President Lyon. Superintendent, your, time for your report.
Good evening, everyone. I will keep my remarks short because of the agenda items that I will speak to during that time. I, I too, just want to congratulate all, every staff member, all the staff members and the families who have been patient and have worked so hard to get to the point on Monday where we welcome back secondary students. I was asked by reporters, different people within our organization, Diane, was it worth it? Was it all, everything that everybody had to do, was it worth it? And I will say a resounding yes. Seeing the students and then their faces, seeing the teachers and their faces, seeing what magic was able to happen with simultaneous, it is worth it. The letters that we received from parents, absolutely 100% worth it. And I'll say more, we'll say more when we do our report on returning to full time in the fall and give a report of what's happened up to this point. Just a couple of things, a couple of things I want to let people know. As President Alfonso and President Lyon said, we are right in the middle of negotiations. Yes, we were going to wait until after May revised, which was more towards the end of May. Luckily or unluckily, I'm on the FICMAT Board, Fiscal Crisis Management. I'm a board member and able to get a real insight as to what's going to happen for the May revise. And so we feel very comfortable as, as the board with parameters and the admin team with me to move up Thursday and Friday, so SRTA on Thursday and CSEA on Friday, being able to make the offers and work on the contracts so that we can be timely and we can, you know, hopefully be finished before the end of the school year so that we can not rest, but actually do summer school, right, everybody? We're going to do summer school so we can have expanded learning for our students. So I don't know, are you going to heckle me, President Lyon? What are you doing? So I did want to let everybody know that that is, that is, I mean, a couple of days away for SRTA and then just one more day for CSEA. So with that, I think that's all I'm going to say at this point. Again, I will be providing some more information during our reports. So thank you, President Fong.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamora. I have no report tonight, except I just want to convey my gratitude to all of our employees who have done amazing, amazing amounts of work. We will continue this gratitude for a long time. Other board member reports. I see Director Flores's hand up.
Thank you. I just want to say that I had the privilege to go to the Biella Elementary Spring Fair before we were able to open. And I just want to reach out to them and say thank you for the invitation. I really had a great time seeing all the kids before, you know, they were able to actually go into class. And I also had the opportunity to go visit Santa Rosa High School this last Monday to, to see how kids are walking in, and that was, I just want to say that the faculty and staff there are so welcoming, and I just want to say kudos for all the job that you've done. And I just wanted to say that I enjoyed myself visiting both schools.
Director Medina, did you have your hand up?
I decided not to say what I was going to say. Thank you.
I see no other hands. All right. Thank you, board members. Director Medina, do we have a CSBA report tonight?
Nothing yet. First meeting's on the 29th, so tomorrow. For me, at least.
All right. All right, we are now going to begin our E-items, our agenda items, action items, and discussion items. And the first one is an action item, approval of the 2021-22 start of school schedule to be full-time and in-person.
Dr. Kitamora? Yes, yes. Thank you, President Fong. We wanted to bring this forward so that it was clear and concise as requested by public, the public, many of the public. And so we are presenting this motion for you tonight. But we also want to give you an update of how we're leading to, to, to that time through summer school, through what we're doing right now through summer school, and then reopening of school full-time for next, next fall. So I want to, I want to share, and I'm going to have the team share, some of the things that have happened to get our secondary schools open on Monday and Tuesday. So let's start with academics, student academics and wellbeings. And I'd like wellbeing, and I'd like Assistant Superintendent Missouri to share some of the trainings that our staff, hundreds, you know, anywhere from 500 to 600 staff attended.
Yeah, we, thank you, Dr. Kimura. We paralleled what we did with the elementary and got a lot of good feedback on that. And so what that was is the first day was around safety and wellness for the school site. And so that included a connection activity with the site administrator and the staff at a school site. We also then went and did kind of the formal COVID requirement and training that we developed with our MOU and Katelyn Wayhall, our COVID coordinator, did that. And then the last thing, we did some work around staff wellness and regulation. Eric Loefgi and a team from Kaiser did a presentation around that idea and just how to take, kind of take, take care of themselves. And on that first Wednesday, there were over 500 participants in each one of those webinars. And then the next day began with some ideas around classroom connection with students. There were over 600 participants in that webinar, and those were ideas that Kesa Ennamark has been developing with our SEL committees and a lot of work that she has done with our connection activities around with counselors and clinicians. And so that came out really well, and then they came and they spent the rest of the day kind of working on activities in their departments or by their schools, kind of develop for their welcoming. And I think you're kind of hearing the positive effects and impacts that those have had.
Great, thank you. Next, just, just a brief update of where we are with the Safe Schools for All Plan Assistant Superintendent, excuse me, Deputy Superintendent Essen, do you want to speak to our June 1 deadline and what's going to happen before then?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone, members of the board and the public. And of course, Dr. Kitamora. So as you mentioned, we do have a June 1 deadline for expenditure or expenditure plans for these funds. We're currently putting that together with the return of both elementary and secondary and the costs associated with those as well as planning opportunities through D-LAC and DAC to look at these plans prior to presenting them to the board at the second board meeting on, second board meeting in May, on May 26, where we'll show expenditures to this point, starting right around March 13 of 2020, going through current and then proposed future expenditures with these funds. So more to come in the next couple of board meetings in the next few weeks.
Thank you. And then Dr. Bustman, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I know you have a full-blown presentation, but could you just say a few words under this item in terms of preparation?
Yeah, so you know, really kudos to Steve and my teams to be able to provide a very richer opportunities this summer that are extended in length. We've almost tripled the number of offerings and we are expected to also double the amount of kids that will be able to serve this summer. And I want to remind everybody that it's not just this summer, but it's the summer, the following summer as well. And so we're also prioritizing some of our students, specifically at our Title I schools, to be able to make sure that we are addressing students and their needs. We are very excited to be able to share the offerings and how we're moving forward with this summer.
Yeah, and also during the school year, we're going to do things to expand the school day for next year with more after-school programs.
Yeah, and I know Assistant Superintendent Missouri can talk to you, but we really are boosting up our partnership with Boys and Girls Club so that we can actually address more needs within our summer programs and also coming back in the fall as well.
I'm looking forward to programs where we've never had them before, after school, during the school year, having them.
I also want to say this, that we've really heard from members of the community and also board members of the importance of having opportunities outside. And also some of our offerings this summer are definitely embedded outside. And I think, I think some of them will be very exciting for our students and hopefully that some of the offerings we can add to the fall as well.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. Just a quick note here that with SRTA, their ratification of the summer MOU, I believe President Lyon indicated to me April 29. And so we're hoping we'll be able to bring that on the May, next May, the first May board meeting to the board. And then Assistant Superintendent Trunell, you want to speak a little bit about, you know, schedules and rosters and staffing and everybody's lift, I don't even think is the right term. I mean, it's like full-blown transformer strength to get our classes situated for secondary.
It certainly was a huge team effort. Just huge thanks first to our families for letting us know what your interests were in whether you would have your child or children in in-person instruction or remain in distance learning. Based on that information, we were able to build out our schedules, of course, in huge collaboration with our school sites, with teaching and learning and, and multiple departments. And then on the HR side, being able to translate all of that information into what substitute needs were. And, and that work is ongoing. As we've gotten underway, we have also enjoyed bringing on additional guest teachers to join our team and support our efforts. And I'll just give a shout out to many of our district team who had to go in this week and very much welcomed the opportunity to be a part of the instructional program to support our students either in-person or distance learning. So this work will be ongoing. We are welcoming, selfish plug, we are, we are welcoming more applicants to be guest teachers in our district. So please do consider us. Thank you, Dr. Kitamora.
Thank you. Let's see. Steve, the self-assessments on Parent Square, parent agreements, how are we doing with secondary? And in particular, how are we doing generally when we reported last meeting about 1,000 students that did not respond to the survey? Could you speak a bit about what we found out?
Yeah, let me, let me hit a couple of layers to that. So the self-assessments, you know, that this week, just like we did with elementary, this is a week to send out reminders to get students logged on. Remember, this is your Parent Square application that you're supposed to fill in every day. So beginning Monday, our team will begin to send out what we have in the, in our MOU with the unions about required students, a 5% cap for students, and we'll send out and start really dialing that in. We're spending this, this week just actually reminding staff and students that take care of and participate in that. And so that, that improvement will be kind of, I think, a strong trajectory. And like we did last time, we will get that kind of going and dialed in next week. In terms of parent agreements, kind of what we were describing is, remember, we had a point where we were asking our families to respond in secondary, whether or not they wanted to be in-person or distance learning. And at some point in that process, we had over 1,000 families that did not respond. And so as we started digging through that numbers, as they developed this week, we ultimately had 67 students at second, at elementary that were still not respondents and 81 at secondary. However, when we cross-referenced that yesterday and today with attendance, we only had five at the secondary and one at the elementary that had not actually attended. So regardless of if they signed the survey, they are actually participating in distance learning or the hybrid. And those five, we are participating in our, in our home visits and Patty Turner's group, the family mentors will be going out to them. And there's some other home visits we do at the, by the end of the week about parent agreements. So we think that number has really dialed in. It is absolutely possible that we've had some families that have left the area, as we all know. So we'll kind of figure that out at that point. The other thing perhaps to give an update about is our, our site safety agreements. Our secondary sites have done a very good job of going through that process. There are a number of them that are completely signed off. There are come that are still working through that and making sure they still have their consensus on their teams put together. But like we did at elementary, we'll have that wrapped up by the, by week number two when we come into this.
Excellent. And just to reiterate, Excellent. And just to reiterate, the thousand students that were on this, the uh the um. If the data that we showed the last time were ones that we were indicated to have not completed the survey, but in when we looked. Deeper into the data, they are actually attending, and it was eight, what was it?
Five, well, eighty-one originally for secondary and sixty-seven. And then again, that got down to five and one.
Perfect, wonderful. So that's that's really good news and great, great detective work on the part of staff. So, excellent. Um uh is this Deputy Superintendent, um you might want to say something about the meals and the bundles that. Um is happening right now, bundle meal, bundles meals for secondary. And uh technology investing, just an update as well.
Yeah, uh sure thing. Uh, excuse me, yeah, with the return to. Uh school for middle i- in high schools this week, uh CNS and Ed Burke and his team are doing a similar. Uh review of what happens during this week and making adjustments as necessary. Uh there is a meal schedule uh posted on our website under our COVID nineteen resources. Uh CNS has decided to stop uh for this week. Seven-day meal bundles going home on Tuesday and Friday until they can assess what students are participating. Uh but they still have opportunities for the seven-day meal bundle pickups, just not going home with students on Tuesdays and Fridays. Uh at multiple locations throughout uh Santa Rosa. Um and as more information comes in with Cohort B going in Thursday and Friday. And then starting next week, they'll make additional adjustments to meal service. Uh as a reminder. Uh all students eighteen years of age and younger uh are eligible for free meals as well as the meal bundles. Uh to take home breakfast is provided daily at multiple locations uh at each site. Uh lunches are designed to be grab and go uh at the conclusion of the school day uh for both middle and high school students. And and any other uh information that comes out or changes will be posted to our website. Uh and we'll also ask our principals to send home to their communities as well, uh so that everybody has that information. Uh busing uh to this point, uh I have not heard any issues with secondary busing on Monday and Tuesday. Uh I know that we have uh one program uh at Cook Middle School that's starting their busing service on Thursday. Uh for for those uh called Cohort B for uh our newcomer students. Uh and then continuing on, uh but uh much like elementary, it's been very quiet, and I've seen buses. Uh throughout Santa Rosa all week, uh and noticeably on the middle and high school routes. With the return to school. Technology um is going as well as it can right now. Uh there's still a lot of scrambling. To make sure that all teachers are set up and it's working appropriately for them as they return to school. Uh but we certainly appreciate the effort of everyone, our IT techs, our our site personnel, our teachers. Uh in getting this up and running. I will share that there will be information coming out for students with Chromebooks. Um in the coming weeks, some Chromebooks will be returned so that we can swap those out with newer Chromebooks. Um for uh school for next year, uh as well as making sure everything is operable for summer school. Uh as well as the start of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Thank you, Deputy. Uh nothing uh more cute, I I have to say cute, and they're they probably don't like that, won't like this, but. Seeing our seventh graders with their little carrying cases and their Chromebooks, oh my goodness, I loved it. Um let me swing back to Assistant Superintendent Chanel um about some staffing um information.
Thank you. I think to round out what has been shared, uh and going back to the team effort. Um what the work entailed included extremely long hours. After-hours work, weekend work, night work, early morning work. That involved our classified and our certificated employees, our management. And we couldn't have done it without everyone um and and your dedication to making sure that this went well. Um so just want to give a shout out to our classified employees. We see you, we appreciate you. And all of our teachers who um agreed to do simultaneous. And even those who uh are doing distance learning, we appreciate and see all of you. Um every effort that you've made has really helped in how we staffed uh the return to school. So. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that as well. Thank you to all.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Um, okay, uh moving on to the start of the twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two school year. Um and looking at the motion or the uh potential motion in front of you about approving a schedule that begins the school year. Uh full five days um and full days uh is very exciting to bring forward. Um please note that I think there was some confusion between the schedule and the in instructional models. You know, whether it's e- examples of things such like uh as block scheduling or bell schedules, that's something we're working out with our teachers or our SRTA. Um negotiations, but in terms of uh the five days full days. Uh separate from the in- instructional models. And just reiterating again, I put this in here again because it is so important for us to understand that. We we really have to think about coming back in in. Uh and I got an email from a parent panicking about um you're changing the curriculum, you're changing, you know, all. You know, everything about how we've been doing things, and we're not changing the standards. We we still have standards that we want to reach. It's the way in which we deliver the standards, provide the standards, build agency around the standards is what we're talking about here. So that we meet the needs of all students and not not just, you know, just a certain group of kids, but but all. So more to come with that. Uh along along with multi-tiered systems of support, you're gonna be hearing a lot about that. Um and then I I I attached the articles again, uh and I have the uh the articles translated into Spanish. And so I wanted to um put that up for you again. Um so with that, um I turn it back to the board uh for, let's see, questions. President.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. What questions do board members have before we go to public comment on this? Uh Director Sheffield.
Just one quick question, it really is for the next item, but you know, this Rick, you had brought up um. The Chromebooks, and I'm wondering, because I'm hearing from parents wondering if Chromebooks and access. Um will be available to students not participating in the summer program so they can continue to do. Work through, I guess, all the programs that are offered.
Yeah, we're working through that right now, Director Sheffield. Uh it's coming up with a plan for. Uh students be able to keep devices that are going to remain in Santa Rosa City Schools next year. Uh but we also do have a number of devices that uh were older when we distributed them. Um just based on timeliness. So we're looking at replacing some of those as well. So. That's the information that will be coming out in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Director Flores.
So um I I just want to say thank you, uh Dr. Kudimora. You answer a lot of my questions uh ahead of time. I just have one. In terms of social emotional learning assessment curriculum, um I'd just like to know a little bit more um about what that would look like and how and how so. Um and what sort of things we're doing in the future. So um and and I think I did tell you that at our meeting, so that that's it.
Okay, I'll let Assistant Superintendent Missouri speak to that.
Sure, Director Flores, are you referring to summer schools particularly or next year in the school year and or both?
Uh I was referring to next year, but I mean, you can talk about both, yeah.
Sure, sure. Um well, let me start with summer school. So one of the things we've done is we've made our clinical staff available uh throughout the summer school programs. They are aligning themselves. With individual programs. So as much as we can, uh there will be a a clinical person assigned to every one of the programs. So if there's issues, they can they can refer and do work. Um that's one of the connections. We're also gonna look at a a kind of a modified youth truth survey at the beginning of summer school throughout all the programs. So we can establish a kind of a real baseline, and then we'll do a post, if you will, a pre and a post. On the social emotional side of that at the end of our summer school programs. Similarly, uh myself and my staff, Eric Loftji and some of his staff will be bringing to the board. Uh when we do presentation at the next board meeting um around mental health and our supports. So we're gonna I'm gonna outline a little bit for you all where we're going with our outlaw, our supports for next year. And included in that is a recommendation from a committee. We've had kind of an SEL committee. And they brought for a recommendation for a pretty in-depth universal screener. And so we're gonna bring that forward for action, and then that'll be something we ingrained. You you may recall that we did that at the beginning of this year uh through our MOU. We really felt like it was important to get an idea of where students were. We're gonna continue that work. And we're gonna kind of come back on that and really do a an in-depth job. So you'll see a little bit more in detail, and you can ask the presenters and things. Specifically about the universal screener and how that's gonna roll.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm um, thank you. And I'm really heartened by the the kind of reduction in that number from a thousand back down to. It sounded like kind of one, ten, one, twenty. Um do you have a breakdown in terms of how many of those kids um stayed in distance learning? And how many came back in person?
I don't, in the spreadsheets we have, but I I I can dig that up, and I'm sure I'd love to cross-reference that with demographic information as well. And kind of bring that back, and I'll bring it to the superintendent for her notes for you.
Thank you. Um and then another question in terms of, you know, how we were able to reach the folks that um hadn't responded. Was there something in particular that that seemed to work best or some way of reconnecting those parents and those kids back to the district?
You know, I don't know at the secondary level if we've had enough debrief time yet. I think we will get into that. Um you know, I know at some point there was a a just US mailer that was a that was a point of information to get that out, so that may have been something. Um I think we probably just have to kind of use, dig into that group and really understand what was it that contacted. And it's, it appears that despite them not filling out the survey, they were fully in ready to enroll either in the DL or hybrid. Um they just didn't respond to the survey. So I I I don't think it's a matter of necessarily them losing contact with a school. You you will know, as we've all done surveys, the response rate on surveys and things, you know, we're lucky to get twenty-five percent on our on our survey rate. So we want to find a way to do that better, because that's a, I think, a key use that site principals want to be able to do to survey their families. We've got to make sure that's easy and available and and usable.
Yeah, I um thank you for that, uh Director Missouri. I think that's a. You know, I I I'd love to know more about what kind of engagement efforts um really seem to be working. Um and you know, to the extent that we develop some of those survey instruments through the Youth Truth Survey in the summer. Um I think, you know, ju- tho- those numbers were. Pressionantes, I don't know how to say that right um in in Sp- in English in quite the same way. Um. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, I I think um I appreciate your questions, um Director De La Cruz. Because I think it goes to how we need to look at our student out, student family outcomes in the LCAP. And our different ways of connecting with families and um a standard, one type, a way of connection. It doesn't work in our community. Um and so we have to figure out with a thousand of our students. That didn't fill out something, um we're lucky that we were able to track everybody down and that our parents are so. Um in in uh in uh embedded in their children, wanting their children get an education that they're there. But I don't want to risk that. I don't want to risk a thousand kids uh potentially. So, um, yeah.
Did, I did have one more question. Um, you know, a- as we, as we understand more about what our families need and our kids need. Um I'm wondering if we've done any kind of further drilling down into why folks chose to stay out versus to come back. Um and to really understand some of the deeper kind of needs, um both in our kids as well as in our families. Um and whether that has resulted in any kinds of, you know, plans to. Um increase the number of days that we're going back or, you know, kind of confirmed our approach at this point. The thing I am curious, especially as so many districts have seemed to have made quick motion in a different direction than. Um than we're experiencing right now.
Now, I I think there's anecdotal. I I think we need to do better than the anecdotal. You heard one of the uh public speakers who is an attendance tech, I believe it's Slater. Talk about the things that are going on in their families and and things, and I've heard the same anecdotal that, you know, people are afraid. Uh uh to in a multi-generational household, to have students come home and potentially bring that back to an elder parent. I so I think I've heard that anecdotally. I think it'd be really wonderful, and it's not just our school district. I think that's a county-wide issue as well. That we really dig into that, because then we can drive services as we need in the future. But anecdotally, those are absolutely some of the things we're hearing.
Yeah, so I guess I I would just love to hear more as we continue to do this work um about, you know, how we are getting beyond the anecdotal. And how we are really understanding, um you know, the needs in our in our in our district and in our families as a whole. Because those things may continue um into the fall. And so just thinking about how we continue to drive. Meeting the needs of our of our kids um based on really solid information. Um about, you know, what additional supports may need to be there um or um. How we continue to do really solid community-based education and outreach to families that. Um still are, you know, in a place of of needing that kind of um information uh and resource.
Very good.
A- and again, I'm gonna, it's, you're gonna hear me say this probably until my last day. Um are we allocating our resources appropriately in our leadership staff to be able to guide that kind of work? Or do we need to look at the structure of our leadership? I mean, talking, I'm talking directors and, you know, all of us here, you know, uh on this panel and in in the audience. To focus on that type of work versus something else that's not really getting what we're getting to, getting us where to where we want to be. So that is really going to be the hard look and um challenging look at. Where are we allocating resources and are we getting what we want uh for our students by those allocations? And I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't think we are. And so. It's the charge to come.
Thank you.
Director Medina.
Our our hard look and reflection and examination is always good in organization, and we have to be fearless. Um it is time now for public comment on this agenda for them.
Uh Director Medina has his hand up.
I'm sorry, I keep looking for your hand. I didn't see it, didn't see it, and now there it is, sorry.
It it's the color, it blends into the bookshelves, I guess. Um. Just just following up on on what was just being discussed, I think in terms of like looking at staff and 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 where we're allocating our resources, I think. Just part of what I think I'd like to request is that maybe we could get an updated like organizational plan that just shows. You know, where we have staff and and maybe that also highlights um any any voids or vacancies that we have. So we can maybe begin to get a better idea for from our perspective. So if so if we could have that given to to all of us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um right before public comment, we are going to just take a second and switch interpreters.
So while we're switching interpreters, if there are members of the public who would like to comment on this item E one, please feel free to raise your hands.
And again, you're going to get two minutes, and we are gonna limit public comment to an hour on this agenda item.
And do we have any students that need to go first?
Good, thanks for that.
Yes, so actually, um that's a very good point, um Dr. Kedemora. So I'm gonna lower all hands for public comment and ask that students raise their hands first. So if you're a student who'd like to make public comment on item E one. The start of uh school schedule to be full-time and in-person for the fall, please raise your hand.
So last call for students to raise their hand. All right. Now I think we're gonna open it up to just anyone who would like to make comment on E1. Looks like we don't have any students in particular who want to do that. Thank you, everybody.
And our interpreter switch has been made, so we can start with public comment.
All right. So our first public comment is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I wanted to start by recognizing all the hard work put in by our secondary colleagues who spent ungodly numbers of hours getting ready for reopening in-person learning this week. Um, I especially want to recognize all of the people who, for their own reasons, were not able or willing to take on the extremely strenuous duty of doing simultaneous learning. Um, while the only reason we were able to open is the, some four hundred some odd people who agreed to do it, there should be absolutely nothing taken away from the people who, for whatever reason, could not or would not do that. Um, adding a whole layer of technology to your teaching is hard enough. Trying to do it in front of your students in the middle of a pandemic is even worse. Um, so I just want to recognize all my secondary colleagues who made it possible for this to open. Um, I do wonder how many substitute positions are still open. I heard Assistant Superintendent Trinell, I hope I pronounced your name right. I apologize if I didn't, um, mentioned that they're still looking for substitutes. I know for a fact that at least some of our district administrators are covering classrooms, which means that they're not doing their other duties. I, I really hope that we, uh, we address that. Um, I wanted to follow along something that, uh, Superintendent Kita Mora said that we are not allocating our resources correctly. Um, although I disagree with the fact that she says we need to figure out which administrators to allocate the resources to. The answer is we need to allocate it to our classified staff. They are the ones who called all those students to get their information. I know for a fact that at the elementary level, the family engagement facilitators called every single family more than once if needed. I know for a fact that at the secondary level, the classified staff backed up by their SRTA brethren and sisterin are the ones who called to get that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment is Ally Myers.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so yeah, my name's Ally Myers and the parent of a sixth grader at Proctor Terrace Elementary School. Um, and thanks for all of those of you who've been the voices and the advocates of returning to in-person school this year. Um, and for the consideration of full-time in-person school in the fall. All us parents know how hard that was. Well, maybe not firsthand, but we know that it was hard work and, um, and I know hybrid continues to be hard work. Kind of doing two things and managing two different groups. I don't think there's any debate there. So thank you all for all that you have done. Um, the last few weeks, my son's been back in school. Two days a week has been great. He comes home a completely different person on Mondays and Tuesdays, and he's even been quoted as saying Mondays and Tuesdays are my favorite days of the week. And, um, I actually learned something today, which is, you know, kind of sad at the same time. Um, but still little joys I celebrate every day. Uh, it's been both encouraging and heartbreaking because we get to see them in this return to normalcy, but then also heartbreaking because we see they're not back to full-time yet. So, um, I have made some emails to the board and in the response about returning to full-time now, it's, I understand the response has been, you know, it's too much. We've got to focus on getting secondary schools back in school and, and I get that. Uh, but my request would be, uh, that for the fall, that when you're considering the full-time back in-person school, that you also consider the amount of time each day. And I know right now we're not doing full uh, all day long. It's just like an abbreviated day. So when you do make the definition of what a full day looks like, that you consider that it is actually a full day from the normal time they would start, the normal time that they would end. And if possible, if we could please consider doing that now, if you can't go back to four days and five days a week, then at least we can maybe give them a couple of more hours of the day because that has made a difference. So thank you. Please consider the request.
Thank you. Next is Veronica Jordan.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Hi, Dr. Kitamura and School Board. My name is Veronica Jordan, parent of a kindergartner and fourth grader. I'm, uh, speaking one more time to respectfully request that you reopen elementary five days per week in person before the end of this school year. Every day counts. And the lack of acknowledgement, um, that every surrounding district has done this already is mind-blowing. Um, including Windsor in the last few days. I just heard, uh, Allegriate mention it, but otherwise no one's even spoke to that this evening. At the last meeting, you said the obstacles were getting secondary open and working on summer school, and I know that it is a lot of work. But I want to point out that four weeks of in-person school for seventy-five percent of our elementary students is much more impactful than elementary school, which by my understanding won't have space for more than about a quarter of our children. Second, I want to respond to the notion that a small group of local parents want to open schools at the cost of vulnerable students. You can question my motivations, but I will tell you from the bottom of my heart that what I believe is that all children need to be in school and it is a false choice that we have to decide between safety and in-person schooling. And finally, I'm just so worried that we still are yet to understand the repercussions of this past year. An SRCS teacher told me she took her elementary kids out to run laps around the track and not a single kid could run a single lap. Struck me in that moment that we have children who have literally not run for a year. Another teacher was in a first grade classroom and she was struck by how many children couldn't read. And I'm just not sure what to do when they're going to be second graders in just a few months' time. I continue to feel very disheartened by the lack of urgency that the leadership of Santa Rosa City Schools has, has shown regarding this situation. And I urge us to put AMB cohorts back in now for the next four weeks. Every day matters for our kids. It's not a matter of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is Donna Prack.
Hi. Um, I wanted to answer Director De La Cruz's, uh, question that she had asked regarding why kids aren't returning. My nieces or, um, my niece and my nephews who are at Santa Rosa Middle School and Santa Rosa High School. Um, they don't have parents who are able to work from home or a flexible schedule. They aren't going back because they can't get to school. I have other friends who are just carpooling with a different kid every week to get their kids to school. So I don't know how that really supports social distancing or these cohorts when they're mingling with a different family every day just to get to school or not every day, the two days a week for four hours of education. I have older kids that I know of who, um, play baseball with my kids who aren't going back to school because they said, what's the point? It's for two four-hour days a week with eight days of total education that I would be in school. Why would I go to that? When I could just stay home and not and just stay in my pajamas and play video games and be on Zoom with my screen off. Those are the kids that I know wh- why they're not going back to school. And I'd also want to know, if you guys know the numbers of how many families are leaving your district and how many kids who have struggled this year? You know, what's the long-term plan on getting these kids backed up? Because Veronica's right, there are first graders and second graders who do not know how to read at our school that aren't getting the extra support that they need. So that's all.
Thank you. Next comment is Paul Polling.
Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah. Um, my, yeah, my name is Paul Polling. I'm the father of three students in a, well, two and one, another third one in the future to be part of the SRCS school, um, community. And just wanted to highlight that I feel like it's not been highlighted enough. Um, we talk a lot about the safety issues, which are certainly very real, um, during coronavirus and mostly have abated, but like, uh, what I don't really hear highlighted is the trade-off, right? So it's not just the safety, like, we can't pretend that the people, that in remote learning, kids are doing better or as well, anywhere near as well as they were when they're in in-person learning. Um, there's all kinds of stats for this that I'm, hope that you're well aware of. In California, mostly around LA school district, they have huge numbers there and English learners especially. So when we talk about like the disadvantaged and, you know, concerns about that are most disadvantaged, um, um, students are particularly the ones maybe not being reached by our outreach programs to get them back to school or that are more reluctant to get back to school and that, oh, we need to focus on them and that should be our focus. Not like, you know, say a bunch of white parents like myself. Well, like, come on. Like, they're the ones that are suffering the most. Like, the data shows you that they are the ones suffering most from remote learning. So if you want to preferentially, and I think you should preferentially, do your policy around those most needy students, you have to get back them, them back in school as soon as possible. Like, it's not just a safety thing. Like, you have to weigh that with the harm, the educational harm being done to the students and the most vulnerable more than all of them. I hear none of you board members bringing that up and weigh that, weigh that against the safety issues, which are mostly gone as long as we mask and distance.
Thank you. Next is Stacia Okura.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and School Board. I'm a parent at CCLA and I want to thank everyone so much who has made this opening possible. And in particular, I want to thank my son's amazing teacher and principal. And I'm here to ask you again to please open our schools immediately for full-time in-person instruction. Secondary is back in session now and I'm asking you to please focus on full-time for the remainder of this year. At the September sixteenth board meeting, Dr. Kitamura mentioned that in order to be in compliance with the current legislation, that if things tip to where the district is able to open, the district needs to be opening to the greatest extent possible. Well, in March, over a month ago, the public health guidance did tip and it now allows for a full-time return to school. That is a change that compels you to open to the greatest extent possible in order to be in compliance with the current laws, legislation. Many of our neighboring distant districts, including those with high schools, are opening for full-time in-person instruction, starting in the next couple of weeks. Those district leaders are demonstrating that it is possible and safe to bring students back full-time. That is the type of leadership that we need in Santa Rosa City Schools. Can you be those leaders that we need you to be right now? Can you reverse the damage that you have caused by keeping school grounds closed for most of this year? It's not too late to make this change now. Every single day of in-person instruction matters to these students who have been failed by our district this year. You have the opportunity to prove right now that we can do this safely. Why wait until summer school and fall to show that it can be done? The opportunity is right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tameya Tenkai.
Yes, good evening. It's Tameya Tenkai. I have two kids. I have a one, uh, in, one in first grade and one in TK. I would like to take this opportunity to actually play a recording from that September sixteenth board meeting. I think we all of us need a little reminder what was said there.
I, I list the team. Can you think of anything where that's the case, Steve?
The only thing I, I would be for capable of serving the vulnerable populations, uh, that's, that's part of the legislation that we need to make sure we're able to do.
Yeah, and, and the legislation also says to the greatest extent possible. And so if the, if the things tip where we are able to open, um, because it is safe based on what we've been saying all this time and we didn't open, we would not be following to the greatest extent possible. Okay.
Well, I guess you are not following to the greatest extent, extent possible. My first grader gets, uh, two day, four hours and the rest of the week, nothing. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, nothing. Two assignments per day is nothing. This clip is a great example of how preemptively the school board had decided for the whole year not to open. Thank you as a parent. It shows your opinion and your district understanding of all the legal requirements, yet you go against it. I would like to officially request from the vocal group of parents in Santa Rosa a letter from you stating why you're actually making this decision for our students. We need to, we need to know the exact reasons why you make this decision because it's, it's wrong. And in terms of responding, why some of the parents choosing not to go to school, we will be conducting a survey for you where you can have that answer. But as a mental health clinician, I tell you that parents are not going back for a couple of reasons, not safety. One is because this, it's the hours that you're providing, it's not enough for parents to go back. And two is because of the testing requirements that you posted in your MOU. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is Mary Hawkins.
Hi, um, my name is Mary Hawkins and I am the mother of two children and Proctor Terrace Elementary School, grades second and fifth. Um, I didn't prepare a comment tonight, but I just do feel compelled to say that I have really struggled with seeing other schools in our town, my, my friends and my colleagues' children going back to school five days a week. And it ends up being that they're getting twelve more hours a week of in-person education. Um, I'm very thankful that my girls are back in school, um, to the minimum expense, extent that they are back in school. But I have noticed that the quality and quantity of their distance learning has gone down and I'm not faulting their teachers. I recognize that it's a really difficult task to manage the two things. But I do feel like they, having gone into in-person learning, we have lost some component of the distance learning. Um, that being said, I have long struggled with wanting to pull my children and put them in private school. I have a moral conundrum with that personally. Um, I do have the financial means to be able to do that. And unfortunately, as I see these other schools opening and Santa Rosa City Schools continue to lag behind and not, you know, the task is too big, we're too, it's too big of a district, we can't get it together. I feel more and more compelled to pull my children from Santa Rosa City Schools. And I really implore you to give me a reason not to. Like, don't just make me empty promises, but like, let me know. I don't, I don't, at this point, I don't feel confident that they will go back in the fall, five days a week, full-time. And I feel like that's a really minimum ask this far out in the pandemic, where we are, full vaccination for teachers. It's honestly, I, I can't, I feel like it's indefensible. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Christina Carr. Christina, we're having some trouble hearing you. Can you adjust the volume possibly? Still very soft. No, it is not.
Is that better?
Uh, but much better. Thank you.
Okay. Well, hello. It's good to see you all. Thank you for fighting the good fight and continuing to work on what it's gonna take to get us back to school. My daughter is a secondary student at Maria Creo High. She's had her first two days of high school. They were the best days she's had in a year. She felt she understood concepts. She felt she connected with teachers. It's, it's a beginning and these kids need this so badly. As a parent, I need to know that we're gonna make full return in fall happen. We're almost to yellow. We are almost to yellow. Everyone else is going. I, we need this. It's safe. What does it take to be ready? How can we as a community understand what the barriers are? Ask for volunteers, ask for, you know, I don't even know what to ask for at this moment. But it's been exceptionally precious to have my daughter in school. It's, I can't imagine what it would be like for parents who are faced with the decision to not be able to get their kids to school because of transportation and the challenges of making the full ball roll for the few hours possible being offered a present. Please, anything that can be done
to enable full return as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Hewitt.
Hello, this is actually Scott Stevenson. Jessica is my wife.
Thank you.
Hi, so I just wanted to express the the concern about not going back full-time. I really think that we need to do that now. We're talking about full-time for the fall and hopefully making that happen. But something important to consider with where we live is the wildfires. So that we're probably gonna miss some time in the fall due to that. So these kids are going to be missing so much in-person education that they're not going to be able to make up. So I really think it's important to get these kids back. We've done the dry run. This, this is working. These part-time days, the kids are doing well, things are doing good. Let's just pull the trigger and get them back. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie Whelan.
Hi, I just wanted to reiterate, I mean, the clip that was shared. There is a law that was put into effect that every district is required to adhere to. And that is to return to school at the best extent possible. When the guidelines were changed to three feet, that meant cohorts don't exist anymore. And that our schools, our elementary schools should have gone back full-time. These are choices that Santa Rosa City Schools are making. And you're not making the same decisions as other surrounding schools, including Rinkin Valley, including Windsor, including Pioneer, Pioneer, including Oak Grove. You are abiding by the MOU that is based on California Public Health Guidance from January 2021, with no exceptions and no adherence to regard if things change, which in the pandemic, they're likely to do. Parents are fed up. In addition, articles in the newspaper where we are saying that, you know, it's marginalized students, they're not not returning because of safety. That's not true. And you don't have any information to say that. You're assuming. No one is returning to a hybrid schedule that is a working parent that has to take off time to drop off someone two days a week and then pick them up. There's no buses. It's short time period and the secondary and high schools had no interest in it. You're stating facts that are not true. Do better.
Thank you. Next is Frank Gorman. Mr. Gorman, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Thank you.
I'm very concerned about the large number of students of color and particularly our English language learners. These are children that cannot afford to have a weak teacher or have a bad year. And distance learning for so many of them, I think, has resulted in them having a bad year. They need to be back in school full-time immediately to begin to remediate all of that learning loss. And 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 I think what I sense is kind of a lack of commitment and passion about those particular students. And that that may be unfair, but what what I question is, I believe you have very good intentions. I'm not questioning your intentions. What I'm questioning are the results that we have to have positive outcomes with kids. And good intentions without outcomes are just nice words. So I respectfully request that you look at bringing students back now full-time. And clearly, in August, to absolutely commit to start school full-time. And that that year is, as my view, is a critical year for students to accelerate their learning, to develop their emotional well-being and their resilience. And in that article on the 23rd, President Fong stated that status quo isn't working. We need something different. Clearly, we do. We need to put students at the very top of our agenda. We need to look at our actions in a deliberate way of how that improves the outcomes with our kids and our families. And we need to closely monitor those those results. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you to everyone who took the time to comment, to wait in line and to wait for this action, for this item on the agenda and for expressing what you believe, what are truths for you. We appreciate it and we listened. Board members, it's open for discussion. So let me remind you, an action item approval of the 2021-22 start of the school scheduled to be full-time and in person.
I'd like to move to approve the resolution to return to school full-time, five days a week in fall 2021-22.
Okay, so there's a hand up. So it was motioned by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Manieri. And I see Director Vice President McCormick's hand up.
I believe Director Sheffield was first.
Okay, um, I do want to acknowledge the families rightfully expressing frustration and disappointment that we're not back full-time right now. And that I am with you and I'm frustrated and I'm disappointed. And I also do think that we failed our kids. And it's not all on the pandemic. It's us two. It's me too. I am grateful to our staff and I'm grateful that so many of our students are back in hybrid and that we're continuing to provide distance learning. But I know it's not enough at this point. I don't think it could have ever been enough. We lost a full year of normal instruction and my kids have lost a full year. And I know I've said it before and I've been called out for saying it, that many of the circumstances throughout the pandemic have been beyond our control. But still, you know, as has been pointed out tonight, other districts are returning full-time and we are not. And we have had a lot of challenges, but it's not enough. And, you know, I'm sorry. I do think we have, and I think that we are doing our best to act in the interests for health and safety and equity of our students and our staff. And we have proceeded with caution and with care. Did we get it right? I don't know. Probably not. I mean, everything changes with COVID and we think we're on top of it. And we try to lighten things up, but then things change. And they kind of change either way with the virus. But I know that we have harmed our kids by not returning full-time this school year. The learning loss and psychologically, it's all real and it's on us to fix this. We do need to continue listening to families and students. We need the input of our staff as well, and I thank you. I'll stop talking now, but I think this resolution is a good step. It's not enough. It's not enough for our students and I'm sorry. But it is a step to assure families and the school community that we intend to get it right, that we have to get it right this summer with the extended year program and we have to get it right this fall. I'm sad that it's not enough. But I do support the resolution.
Vice President McCormick.
Um, I I appreciate everything that you just shared, Director Sheffield. I have many of the same feelings. And it has really been a struggle to lead during this time. I will say that I am enormously grateful for all of admin, all of classified, all of the teachers, the students and everybody else in the educational community at San Rosa City Schools that have been really trying to take this step and get this real moving. It is a heavy lift, a very heavy lift. And it has not gone as fast as I personally want it either. But it is not something we can just turn a light switch on and go. And we are gonna have to phase in. That has been our best attempt at and moving forward and taking steps forward during this time. But that being said, I will say that I cannot more strongly be in support of being full-time, full-go, summer school and fall. And I am not changing my mind on that. And we need to take this phased-in approach that we have tried to meet the demands of every student and every family. Because, you know, different zip codes in our own district are having very different needs and very different realities during this pandemic. And we need to keep that in mind and we have to serve everybody. And sometimes equity is not equal. And what's right for one school or family or zip code might not be right for another school or family or zip code. And so that being said, I just, we have to be back full-time in the summer and the fall. Because I don't think this thing's necessarily going away anytime soon. And so we have to learn how to function in this environment. And we, just like Director Sheffield said, we need to learn how to do it better. But I am very grateful for everybody that has tried so hard to support and educate our athlete or our students during this time and and taking care and getting the hybrid successfully launched these last few weeks. So. So I am strongly in support of this.
I see no other hands. Director De La Cruz.
Thank you, President Fong. Thank you, Director Sheffield. Thank you, Director Vice President McCormick. I join your voices in frustration and sadness and a recognition that this has been super harmful on our kids to be out of school for this long. And acknowledging the enormous responsibilities to lead during a time where there is so much conflict, so many different truths. And and I just want folks to hear that we are hearing a very diverse group of voices and needs from all of our kids. And I want to be clear that I don't believe that the vocal group of parents is small. I I hear you. I hear and I see and I'm grounded in the data. And I also recognize that there is a deep need for us to be grounded in data to really deeply and more deeply understand beyond anecdotal evidence, which is why I've been so clear about saying how how important it is for us to survey and truly understand why people are not back. And I agree that two days a week make it impossible for working parents like me and my family to put our kids back in school. And I do think that five days a week makes it easier on many parents to be able to go back to school. But I really want to understand why people are still out. And and I and I do not believe that we can be making decisions grounded in anecdotal information without having that deep connectivity to our community. And the suffering in the Latinx and essential worker communities is real. It's what I work in every day. And I know that many of the people in our school communities have also seen and experienced that. And it's painful for us together as a community to grieve in a way that is productive and also healing. And I really hope that what we are able to do as we work really, really diligently and very hard over the summer is to make up for the harm that our kids have experienced and that our families have experienced across our district as a result of this pandemic and as a result of the decisions that we felt we needed to make in order to be protective of our kids and their education. And I know that there's still many, many children who are in distance learning, who are experiencing even a reduction, even even more of a reduction in the learning they have gotten this year because of how hard we've pushed to come back to half-days a week. And that's not okay either. And those costs are real. And and I want to tell parents whose kids are still in distance learning and who are seeing those negative impacts on their kids who managed to get through a very difficult year in distance learning, that I'm sorry that your kids are going through that as a result of our pushing hard to go back half-days a week for this last month and a half of school. I'm really grateful, Diane, for the work that you and your team have done to thread a needle that has the smallest possible opening I've certainly ever experienced in my time in leadership. And I am grateful for the grace and the respect and the love that we as a community continue to show each other. And respect for differences in life and truths. And and to recognize that we have to be in this together in order to be successful as we move into next year, to ensure that our district and our kids and our community heal. So, thank you. I think completely in support of this resolution and want my community to know how hard we were all, we will all be working and how hard we all have worked to get to this point. But this is a true moment where we are saying and we are committing to you in black and white in a resolution that we are going back to school full-time in the fall. We are going back to school full-time all summer long to make sure that the losses that our children and our communities have experienced do not continue.
Thank you to Director De La Cruz. Okay, do I see any other hands up, board members? Am I gonna miss anybody? So I will, I will be very quick on this. Yes, we absolutely full-speed ahead to full-time, five days a week in the fall, barring any other weirdness that is happening to us. Parents who have been pushing very hard and doing research and communicating with us to provide more hours of school. We hear you and we would love nothing but to provide more hours of school. I know that our superintendent has worked toward that, has worked behind the scenes to work on that as well. And all I can say that is when you have systems and our system is is different from the other systems, because every system is unique. Every system is run by people, by human beings. And we have Benad Valley and we have Rinkin Valley and the other districts who have chosen different paths with seemingly the same parameters, of course. But in systems and when people are trying their very, very best, and we have smart people in our district, very smart people in our district, I would, I would cast my vote with them anytime. And this is where we are. This is it. Period. It's not that we have failed to keep students at the front. We have always kept students at the front. And in doing so, in keeping students at the front, we are keeping our human beings in our system at the front as well. And the two words that really were so pervasive through this whole thing, which is where we are, where we are, where I think where we are is is safety and fear. And we worked very closely and I'm very, very proud of how closely our district administration worked with our labor partners. And that we collaborated and and made these step-by-step choices all along the way. And these step-by-step choices, of course, they, the paths changed and and there was no path a lot of the time. they, the paths changed, and, and there was no path a lot of the time. So, when you have big organizations, and when we are doing things with integrity and with collaborative work, this is where we are. I'd like us to be in a different place. I think everybody would like us to be in a different place with how much education we can provide our kids. But we have also worked, we also have to think about what we are providing kids and how every single person in our system, CSCA, SRTA, every management person, every single person in the system has done their very best and then some to provide for children and our teenagers, not in person, as in person as possible through this 2D medium. And so, I don't see a way where we, where we can add more hours or days. But if we can, we're for it. But I don't see that. So, we are working very hard on social, emotional wellness, on connecting with our kids and taking care of every single child. And you can see that when, when we just heard the story tonight, that there were a thousand missing kids, and now we, we found them all with detective work, except for six. That's, that's phenomenal in terms of that kind of deep dive into taking care of every single kid, knowing every single kid by name and what every single child needs. And no, they're not in school five-days-a-week, and they're not in school four-days-a-week. And that's very sad, and it's very painful, and it's painful to every single one of us. But please hang in there with us. I'm very proud of the way this district works. I'm proud of the kinds of future that we're gonna put together for students and how our staff works together with us and for our kids. So, thank you. Hang in there with us and, and keep talking to us, keep talking to us. Please, please do not, do not give up on us. We are not giving up on, on anyone. And we worked very hard with Diane. She worked incredibly hard. She's a leader in the state on emergencies. They turn to her. And we will soon be turning over the mantle to our Assistant Superintendent, who will work as hard. So, I'm very proud of our district. And at the same time, we're very sorry that we can't do more. The vote is before us, and it was Director De La Cruz who motioned and Director Menieri who seconded. So, could we have that vote now, please?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director, Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Menieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. All right, thank you, that passes. We are going to continue with this, and we're moving to item E11. And then after item E11, we will take a break. And again, we're moving item E11 closer because we believe that there might be more people who would like to speak to extended learning during the summer. This is an action approval of the 2020-2021 in-person, in-person extended school year program. We heard a little bit about it, we'll get here a little bit more. And Dr. K. Tamora.
Thank you, President Fong. As we bring our people over to, or who are gonna speak to this, I think they see Directors Alonardo, and we have Director Dylan coming over to Dr. Guzman. There, there she is. We, we feel that we are in a place to provide expanded learning in us, in our summer program because the protocols that we work together with our union partners is working. Such to the fact that today, I was notified, we were notified that we have a COVID case of a student at one of our elementary schools. But because we could isolate to one group, one group, we, we only need to now quarantine that one group of the class. The other, the, the A cohort will be able to continue on and receive their instruction. And so, again, this is proof that we are, are very thoughtful about how we've provided mitigation for our students, for our staff and our families, such that we have contact traced and we know exactly what's, where the students have been exposed or, or not exposed. And to be able to only have to quarantine a half of the class. And it, it is, is proof that all the hard work that we have done has been, is, is working. And so, when we go into the summer program, we feel, we feel comfortable that with these protocols in place, we can offer in-person summer school. With that, I turn it over to Dr. Guzman.
Thank you, Dr. K. Tamora, President Fong, members of the board. Directors Alonardo and Director Dylan will be doing the presentation tonight. But I do wanna sort of set the stage a little bit. As we are very happy that secondary did open this week, we'll now be pivoting to really providing some opportunities for summer. The list you see tonight is still a work in progress, which is, I think, is also exciting. We are continuing to reach out, specifically with partners within our county to offer opportunities that are social, emotional, and educational, to be able to provide a rich environment for our students. I also think, as I said earlier, that these partnerships will provide some opportunities in the following return. So, with that, I actually turn it over to Directors Alonardo and Director Dylan. Thank you.
Good evening.
Um, I'm sorry to chime in and just say that I tried to share my screen, and I was not, I do not have permission to do so, so if that could be.
Thank you, Ms. Dylan.
Sure, I will.
Renee, can you turn that on, please?
I believe I just turned it on. Could you try one more time?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Great, thank you, Beth. We appreciate it. While Ms. Dylan sets that up and it comes on, let me start by saying good evening, Superintendent K. Tamora, President Fong, Deputy Superintendent Edson, and members of the board and our community. It's our pleasure to be here with you this evening. And I would be remiss if I did not start without noting the pleasure I have to be with you tonight, as I was on April 14th. And to take a moment, as I did last time, to thank you for your leadership and service during this time. Just listening deeply and observing, I know that leadership during this time can weigh heavily. And every decision is fraught with second-guessing. And I appreciate all the nights that you've second-guessed yourself. And I thank you for your service to our community. That being said, we are pleased to be here tonight to share with you planning for the 2021 extended learning summer programs. And allow me, on this topic, to start by acknowledging the Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Education and Ms. K. Tamora for her support of summer programs. I wanna make it very clear from the beginning that extended learning summer programs in tough budget times, especially in California public schools, can often not be protected. They often can be the first things that are trimmed and cut. Santa Rosa City Schools has a proud tradition of offering multiple rich programs over many years. And Dr. K. Tamora has done a wonderful job with the board's support of protecting those in budgetary times that have been difficult, going back to the Great Recession, and making sure that Santa Rosa City Schools has offered things and continues to offer things. And that's important context and worth acknowledging. So, what I would like to start with then, in a less formal register than what I just said, is way to go, Dr. K. Tamora. Keep it rolling. Thanks for the support of all these robust summer learning programs, and same to the board. And now, back to my more formal register. I will go to slide number two and turn it over to Ms. Dylan to continue.
Perfect. Good evening, Superintendent K. Tamora, President Fong, and members of the school board. And every year in planning for our summer programs, and that is this year and in years prior, we always keep at the forefront mission, vision, and priorities that are committed to supporting the whole child, inclusive of their academic and social, emotional needs. And so, we strive annually to provide a robust program that serves students from pre-K to 12th grade and even beyond in our extended school year programs, collaborating within our district amongst our community partners to provide a variety of options for families. We always want to provide a well-rounded program for our students that provides many different options. And as Tim has shared and has been discussed tonight, this has never been more true than this year as we work to provide more and longer programming that would honor the experience of our students, supporting them and reflecting on those learnings and growing in multiple ways and preparing for the next year.
And I would like to add that this can include multiple different opportunities. We know that credit recovery will be an important component of that. And regardless, we want to serve a wide swath of our community. I would say in an ideal world, we would serve all 15,000-plus of our students. But I'll be a little more realistic in saying we're going to push ourselves to serve as many as possible, and over 4,000 is a wonderful place for us to be beginning. And with that, I'll turn it back to Ms. Dylan.
Great. Sorry, my slide is not advancing. Isn't that always the way? My apologies.
Maybe just exit and go back in.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
I apologize.
Don't worry, it's okay.
You know, let's see. Pause the share, resume and see, but there we go. Okay. Patience, right? All right. Okay, this table here, this chart. And we could not add anymore to it, although we have more to add. But this represents a snapshot of 12 of our programs. It's not inclusive of those that are recently added, and it is not inclusive of some of the ones we're currently working on. With summer quickly approaching, we are continuing and to support the planning of these programs that are already kind of established and also continuing to seek out additional opportunities as Tim referenced.
So, what's notable is that the slides capture a moment in time, obviously. A moment in time in which we see 4,000 and rising. We'll speak to some of the programs that we just added recently, even as of this last week. And you notice that programs, of course, fluctuate. And there's a, of course, natural cycle to that due to the pandemic. So, in 2019, you'll notice when I spoke to the opening of this presentation that we've had robust programs in effect over many years. We've always accentuated the fact that summer learning is a continuation and immersive part of learning in general. Due to pandemic and last-minute concerns, we did trim some traditional offerings during last year's summer school. So, we made sure that not only did we keep the baseline of what we think are just the basic ones that we have to commit to, but we also brought back some of those that we trimmed, refusing to let those go. And we also then sought out to add new, and we even enhanced previously offered experiences before as well, which we'll speak to in a few minutes. So, 4,000 and rising, I think that's a wonderful number to hear. And rising is also something we're proud of because we know we're still working on it.
Okay, well, we would like to just provide a quick overview of several of the programs that we're offering this summer, some of which are new this year and some of which we may have hosted in the past but are expanding this year in capacity and/or length. And the KA6 Academy is a program we offer annually to targeted students at our elementary schools. Each year, we strive to provide a hands-on, engaging environment supportive of academic and social growth. And I can tell you from working with the administrators and the teachers in these programs that, that there is a lot of fun had nestled there in the learning. This program is typically a three-week program in years past, but we have expanded it this year to be a four-week program.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dylan. We also have extended school year. You'll know this has been a traditional, one of the traditional staples of Santa Rosa City Schools. We have it at multiple locations. And it's always about making sure that we support students with individualized education learning plans. We all know, and maybe the pandemic is a great reminder, learning doesn't start and stop on some arbitrary timelines. It's always ongoing. Human beings are always learning. That's the beauty of being in schools with students. They evidence learning every day from all kinds of experiences. So, the extended school year refuses to allow students who might be experiencing some learning challenges to not have a chance to meet the goals of their individualized education plan and holds up summertime as a way to support with some extended time and with some deepened, immersive, one-to-one contact, a chance to make sure that those individualized learning plans are actualized and not just written on paper, but experienced so students can move forward and continue growing and learning.
Okay. So, in the summer of 2018, following the Tubbs fire, we had the pleasure as a district as, to partner with Sonoma State University's Excel for Youth program. We hosted it at Helen Lehman on one of our school campuses. This is typically a program held at Sonoma State for a fee to families. But we were able to host it at Helen Lehman Elementary School that summer following the Tubbs fire. And it really met both an academic and a social, emotional need that was really felt by families. And so, we were excited to be able to partner again with Excel for Youth. We had been all set to do it last summer. It didn't pan out considering the circumstances. So, we're really pleased to be able to partner with them again. The feedback from families and students is extremely positive. The classes are enrichment classes that are engaging, inspiring, but also have that academic focus that we want students to kind of experience as well. We are partners in partnering with them this year to offer not a two-week program, which we've done in the past, but to offer three weeks of classes to students, which is very exciting.
Yeah, and I know our community includes parents and students of people who work at Sonoma State University. So, just really, I wanna recognize them before I speak to High School Credit Recovery. What a wonderful partner. Not only are they involved in our ethnic studies initiatives across the district, but they're involved in supporting us in enriching summer programs for students. So, what a wonderful gift to have that university in our backyard and to have them be a partner. And I can speak to the diligence of Ms. Dylan and our SSU rep who have met countless times, many of which I've missed while juggling something else, to work on the details because getting programs off the ground in the summer, coming out of pandemic, there's limitations for all organizations. And so, requires a lot of communication back and forth. So, just kudos to our SSU partners, and thank you for, for working with us to support our students. For High School Credit Recovery, typically we do a, two shorter sessions. Last year, we, we shrunk down to a single session of a little bit of elongated nature. This year, we're offering two sessions of elongated nature, knowing that credit recovery is a key part of responding to the ways in which public high schools are designed across the nation and the way that credits are accrued. And part of the challenge in the pandemic has been trying to make sure that students don't find themselves in what I call the credit crunch, where there's scrambling and concern and stress and anxiety. So, we've made sure we opened up a wide swath of time this summer. Pretty much, it encompasses all of June and July. And we've also made sure we are using the maximum tools that we can to provide as many students as possible the opportunity. And we've also made, we'll couple oftentimes an online credit recovery, this time with chances and a planned, specific opportunity for in-person supports so that students can get extended in-person office hours. They can get extended educational instruction to accompany their own progress and development. And in there, you'll note at the very bottom, the reason why I was with you on the 14th of April was to speak to the individualized graduation plan. So, I kudos to you for being patient to listen to me twice in one month. The individualized graduation plan is something that's gonna be prioritized because it comes to a sunset at the end of summer 2021. So, we're intentionally hiring counseling and teaching staff to focus on seniors who might need to complete some components of that. Of that so they can successfully utilize the tool that this very board has supported so robustly. So that will be a focus as well.
Well. There we go. All right. I figured out the little nuance here of the presentation today. So thank you. Santa Rosa City School campuses have partnered with Landpass for many years. Providing students outdoor learning experiences in some of our county's most beautiful open spaces. We are extremely grateful to be partnering with them this summer. And our partnerships have always occurred during the school year. And that is partly due to Landpass funding, which they receive funding that supports our Title I schools with attending at no cost. Which is a great gift to our students to get outdoors and have these experiences. This year, however, we are thrilled to be able to offer to students. One-week camps at two beautiful locations in Sonoma County. Preston Farms up in Healdsburg and Bohemia Ecological Preserve in the Occidental area. And so this is an opportunity for students to attend a week-long day camp that is from nine to three daily. That includes hikes and exploring nature and learning about the ecosystem in which they're visiting. Students, we will provide transportation. We felt it was critical since the locations are really outside our city and our town. That there is no limitation to students being able to get there. And so transportation, of course, as well as snacks and meals is provided. And we're very excited to be able to kind of get students outside, which I know has been a priority of the boards as well.
Thank you. The Landpass is a great juxtaposition for what comes next. I'm sure during the last, over the course of the year, that many of you have ventured outside intentionally. To relieve stress and anxiety and to soak in the beauty of Sonoma County. So I was just looking at those pictures thinking about, you know, students under the redwoods. We're one of the very few places in the world that has access to that in our backyard. So that's just awesome. On the flip side of getting outside and getting the blood pumping, we also want that intellectual acumen pumping. And that is part of what I spoke to last time with you about some of the next steps of supporting students in responding to returning from the pandemic. And continuing learning in it and then coming out of it. Is to make sure we're focusing on robust, common core and A through G supports, which this district has strongly committed itself to. So one of those key features is high-level mathematics. The ability to use the language of mathematics, to be conversant and competent in it. And confident as an academic learner in it. So Acelus was a program that we had previously. Even last year, though, was not nearly going to be the eight weeks of opportunity that we're going to see this year. For our rising seventh through ninth graders. It's an opportunity to practice something kind of ahead of time. I don't know if many of you are aware of the upper bound programs at Sonoma State. But they teach rich and robust summer programs to students and they often place them in classes. Working on content that they're going to take that very next year. What a wonderful idea. So the idea of Acelus is to make sure we're accelerating students competency in mathematics. And you'll note that those students who are rising into ninth grade because they're entering that high school year. One great lift in that credit crunch worry is to provide them elective credits upon successful completion. And instead of a window of four weeks, the window is expanded to eight weeks for students to take advantage of that. Maybe find a little summertime in between, as there'll be two sessions of that as well.
We are pleased to continue our partnership with the Luther Burbank Center of the Arts to offer elementary and secondary students. The opportunity to attend Mariachi and arts camp. I know that Santa Rosa City Schools has a strong commitment to the arts, recognizing the value that it adds to our students' lives. And so we believe this is an important program to continue to offer to our students. It is going to be offered in a mix of both virtual and in-person. And so we do believe it provides also those virtual and in-person options, a little variety for families that would like. Options for the format of a summer program. They'd like their children to participate in.
Migrant education epitomizes the board's commitment to its own self-described mission. SRCS ensures equitable access to a transformative educational experience grounded in the assets of our students. So migrant education is about providing social, emotional and academic enrichment. That allows students to utilize personal experience and language assets, yes, assets. To explore their emerging academic identities. And it will continue this year. And it will also have a component, we heard earlier about activity and students. It'll have a specialized component that focuses on something called sports for learning. Which is really helping our students also be physically fit in the process. And really get that academic exercise and those wonderful endorphins that come from it.
Okay, the Mike Howser Academy is a program that we will continue to offer this year. Which offers a really great opportunity to students that are making that transition from middle school to high school. And this also highlights one of the partnerships that we have with our community. As you're seeing with Landpass, Mariachi Camp, Excel for Youth. We have made many connections with our community organizations to support us in offering a summer program that is robust. The Mike Howser Academy provides for students the opportunity to hone in on math and science skills through STEM activities. In a real work, real-life work environment. So students really get to see how does this play out? In a job that I may be interested in or may really want to work towards. So we're very grateful this opportunity because it's unique. And not really evident in other programs. So to be able to offer this is a real gift to our students who are entering high school. Which is a huge transition moment in their.
Project Make, it's been something that we've been able to integrate into our summer learning programs. Going back a few years now. And it's something I think we kind of refused to give up on. Because it's about making learning relevant and exciting. Through students at the center as their creators, explorers, inventors. Of course, that means I have to apply academic knowledge and skills. We love academic knowledge and skills, but not static knowledge, applied knowledge. Knowledge that is exploratory and placed in context. And so for us, that's an important part of Paulo Freire pedagogical approaches. Center the student, emancipate knowledge by having them take control of it. And so Project Make really centers the student experience. And I believe this year, whether or not it's explicit, conscious or unconscious. Students are going to explore their academic identities in relation to the pandemic through what they create. It may not be stated as that's what they're doing, but that's what we're all doing as we make sense of the last 12-plus months.
So this summer, we're really excited to kind of make happen something we've talked about in the past. I know we've had conversations about offering programs that are closer to the start of the school year. Traditionally, many of our programs have happened right at the end of the school year as students are leaving school. And so the idea behind a jumpstart is that it kind of jumps the students into a new year. And that it is held closer to the start of the school year. To give them an opportunity to get on campus, to possibly meet their teacher. To get reacquainted to school, to the routines. And to build relationships and friendships and with their classmates. And so this year, we're offering all sites the opportunity to plan a jumpstart program. These really are site planned, site organized and site created. We want schools and teachers and their administrators to have the opportunity to think creatively. About ways to welcome students back and giving them a jumpstart into next school year. I can tell you from talking to principals that are in the planning stages with their teachers. That this ranges from club offerings, murals, team building activities. Multi-age groups, not necessarily just by grade level. And that there are teachers that are really kind of feeling inspired to do something that perhaps they've not had the opportunity to do before. And that these jumpstarts present a really great opportunity for. So I do want to say that the numbers on maybe slide two, if that's the slide, I think I have to go back to slide two or four perhaps. And that talk about the students served do not include any of the number of students that will be a part of these jumpstarts. Because that is in the planning stage, we don't yet have a firm number on the number of students served. So we will see the number of students served and the number of programs really increase, I think greatly as sites plan their jumpstart programs.
And as we transition to the next slide, of course, we look forward to the annual September fall board discussion. When we'll be able to present you the site jumpstart final details. And we look forward to what that will be. SRCS has typically tried to make sure we offer students summer program camp program options. This year, our childcare programs will continue. And we plan to make sure that the new elements intertwine once again academics more heavily so that we can support students. Which Ms. Dillon might speak to in a little bit, like using some of our programs like Lexia and Let's Go Learn. So we can track data on students and at the same time provide them social, emotional opportunities to support them.
So in between submitting this board report and coming here tonight. As we shared, there are things continually in the works. Recognizing our desire and your desire to offer as many programs to as many students as possible. And we have added some additional partnerships. And they include a partnership with Boys and Girls Club to offer a full-day program at a couple of our elementary school sites. A partnership with Alliance Redwoods to offer full kind of day camp experiences for our secondary students. That will allow them to have a similar experience to what Landpass is offering to our younger students. And then we are adding some additional online remote-only options that we believe will allow students to continue. In kind of a self-paced manner. Through engaging lessons that will adapt and meet their needs over the course of the summer. And really be somewhat self-explanatory and allow them to work at a kind of a self-paced rate. And those include Seesaw, which is one of the platforms we are using this year that offers some great summer lessons. Let's Go Learn as well as Lexia. And I would just add that in the childcare programs and in Boys and Girls Club, as Tim referenced. Those programs will not be only a camp experience and only games and those sorts of activities. It will include an academic intervention component that will allow students to get kind of some support while they're there as well. Perhaps through other lessons, but also through some of these online programs that our students are comfortable with and already know how to use.
So before we speak about next steps, allow me to add two key things. One is like a little nuance on Alliance of the Redwoods. One of the programs we just recently cemented. It has social, emotional activities. It has team building and challenge courses. So there's kind of like physical and social, emotional, but it also has forest ecology. Science and it has embedded in it herpetology and study of native California animals and species. So there's this nice blend and balance. And I think coming out of the pandemic situation, I think we all crave balance. The second thing I wanted to mention is I don't want to say that this is all perfect. There were some conversations that we began and partnerships that we tried to cement. That slipped a little through our fingers as we keep trying to build more options and opportunities. And we've worked with Listening for Change for many years in Santa Rosa City Schools. And just due to pandemic-related resources and energy. We talked about summer school infusing into our programs. And at this point, we're not quite sure if we're going to be able to pull that off. Another example would be I contacted Westminster Woods for something in similarity to Alliance of the Redwoods. And they were very welcoming of us reaching out and wanting to build a partnership. But coming out of the pandemic have their own restrictions. And so we haven't quite been able to kick that into high gear and say that's something we can offer. But I guess my point is there, we didn't go through the things that we've reached out to that didn't manifest and materialize as a reality. We'd rather share with you what we can certainly say is going to happen. But please know there's been multiple contacts, different programs. And really thank you if any of our public partners are out there listening. Thank you even for a minute for spending the time on the phone with us to imagine summer school for Santa Rosa City School students. Even if we couldn't quite pull it off. So next steps, Ms. Dillon?
Yeah, so as we know, we are quickly approaching summer school. Our program administrators for the programs that we hire administrators for are all in place. And they have been working so hard to post positions. Thank you to Mary Alice in HR who created a great system that we're extremely appreciative of. And so to hire staff and begin enrolling students. Messages are going out to principals so that students and families can be informed of the different programs. And so we are working quickly and to ensure that families have noticed as soon as possible with a May 14th deadline. Of really kind of trying to firm up rosters for all the programs and get students placed. And look forward to really seeing these programs materialize and to welcoming students to them on campus. So just want to thank everyone who was involved with the summer programs. It really does take a team effort. It's a team effort amongst our department, human resources, facilities, food nutrition services. It really takes the whole team to make this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Before we turn it back to Dr. Guzman and the board. Please do allow me to refer to something that went out to our community tonight, as a matter of fact. And it went out probably around 7:11 PM, maybe somewhere around 7:11 PM to be exact. And it was our weekly parent square communication with families. And in that, our superintendent, Dr. Kitamura, refers to an article that you can read in there. And it's called Accelerating Learning as We Build Back Better. So as you noticed in one of our earlier slides. Yeah, the pandemic caused us to slip a little bit on slide four down to six programs, which I'm thankful we offered. And I'm robustly and profoundly thankful to our board and cabinet for supporting students with what we could do. But now we're bringing back programs that maybe we'd only done one year before, after the Tubbs fire. And we're strengthening them. Or we're bringing back programs that we knew have been successful and we're extending them. So they cover all of June and July instead of a few weeks in June. And then we have the better, the newer, the additions. That would be things like Jumpstarts, Landpass, Alliance of the Redwoods. And the integration of learning in our summer camps. And the Boys and Girl Clubs of Sonoma County partnership with us. So before I turn it back over, it is really in that article, it says in Accelerating Learning as We Build Back Better. And no shame if you haven't read it because you're in the board meeting. But I was multitasking and I skimmed it. And it talks about programs that allow us to build relationships. We think the 16 programs with over the 4,000 students in Rising, we will support, we will build relationships. It talks about supporting brain development. And in the programs we discussed, that is also highlighted as well. And like I said before, the brain doesn't stop making connections. Human beings are pretty brilliant. They're always understanding and making coherence. Not always in the ways you're thinking, and that's where you have to check in and ask them. And I think this will be a great chance for students to round out their sense of themselves as a learner. Which then gets to that culturally responsive part that's embedded in that article. And the idea that the education has to begin, as I spoke from earlier, from inside the learner out to the world. Learning is intentional. Consciousness projects itself out. And lastly, it's about blending the academic and the social, emotional. And I'm not sure if our blender is 100% worrying perfectly, but I think it's worrying pretty well. And it's mixing things up. And I think we're going to deliver a nice combination of experience for our students and families. And I thank you for the honor to be able to try to bring that to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Dillon, Director Zolinardo. I appreciate all of your work and the heavy lifting that went on with this. And with that, I turn it over to Dr. Kitamura and the board.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. Before I turn it over to board questions. I hope that the board and the public can see how much work has gone into a more robust, increased, diversified summer program this summer. It is no joke that when we talked about getting ready for summer and fall, we mean it. We mean it. We mean it. We do not, we we are not about causing distress and harm to kids unintentionally due to the circumstances. I agree, things have happened, but it doesn't stop us from wanting what we believe can happen for kids in the summer and in the fall. And I think this summer program is testament to that. So with that, I turn it over to the board.
We are going to take a second.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're ready. Thank you so much. That was phenomenal. Phenomenal. But we are going to do questions only now, board, and then we'll take public comments. So questions, please. Director Flores and then Director De La Cruz and Director Sheffield.
Thank you. So I think I only have one question here. Well, first of all, thank you for all the work that you've done. It's very thorough and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you. Thank you for all of this and you know, serving, you know, over 4,000 students in this summer. It's it's going to be quite a feat to make sure that, you know, you get all those kids in there. So the question that I have for you is under the agenda, under content regarding high school, high school credit recovery. It says that programs will be offered both in person and online credit recovery options. And then on the report, it was it was just online and in person non instructional cohorts and supports will be available. I just want to make sure I get that clear because it's contradicting a little bit.
Yeah, thank you for the clarifying question. So the programming for credit recovery will be primarily an online interface set up to serve the greatest maximum number of students. And referring back to that credit crunch I talked about, Mr. Flores, we don't want to get ourselves stuck where we unintentionally don't help students recover as many credits as possible. At the same time, there will be opportunities which haven't existed in previous sessions and programs for the online credit recovery. Where it's online to be interfaced with having the in person time. So there's a whole block in the day. It's roughly an hour and a half set aside for students to be able to come in. And so that could be getting extended instruction because something's unclear and they're struggling. Could be getting one to one help, could be doing office hours in person. And even today I worked with CNS, our Child Nutrition Services, to work out some what we call shelf ready food for students when they're on campus. They can have food and even one of those days, they can make sure they're picking up their bundles of food on Monday. So we can serve them kind of in terms of their dietary needs as well. So it'll have that which will allow them to access that in person. And it will also have that online component.
Okay.
So all the summer, all the high school credit recovery programs will be so whole working person. I just want to make sure when people contact me, I'm able to to.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Yeah. So the high school credit recovery is primarily online. Once again, it has to do with mitigating any concerns about being able to serve as many students as possible. And I'm gonna, I wasn't going to add this, but because you're asking, Mr. Flores, and you've given me the opportunity, I will say this. Students in the pandemic have served as economic support in their families. We know this to be true. So part of the processing of the programming in high school is to allow through the online interface some flexibility in students to pursue economic means and they can take initiative and sometimes can complete some of their coursework. Let's say in the early evening or at a different time other than the scheduled time of the interfacing with them. So they can do more self initiated work in time, which kind of helps students be more flexible as a member of a family with complex social and economic needs coming out of pandemic. So that was that weighed heavily in consideration as well to be as flexible for our families.
Director De La Cruz, was it, who was next?
Go ahead. I'm good.
Director Sheffield.
Okay. Well, first of all, I do have to say, you know, I think I was a little critical of all of us in my previous comments. Not my intention at all to direct these at district staff. I think my intention was really to key it up for really these incredible programs. That this is the next step, that this is the response that we need to return to normalcy. I do have some questions. I just have to say thank you for the presentation and I love the academic focus that we're making this summer credit recovery and in person supports and outdoor activities and the partnerships with Landpass. This is really, really amazing. And and opening it up to 4,000 and growing plus students. There are probably a lot of families I can imagine who have not taken advantage of summer programs before and they're new to this whole process. So my first question is how are we reaching out to the families that really, you know, that that want this, that need this? That need some handholding?
Appreciate you asking that question. First of all, I would say the first thing I'd want to say is that our our website hasn't been updated. And I know that is not necessarily a place to register, but it is a place that we can families can see the programs. And I can tell you myself that I'm listed as a contact for one of the programs. And I have heard from several parents in the last couple of days asking questions and just wanting to know how to register. But that that's not good enough, of course. And so I know that the administrators for our various programs have created really great flyers and Google forms. We've kind of shifted from like the paper registration, right? In this world that we live in and to electronic ways for families to apply either to programs that are more open or to programs that are targeted. It depends on whether or not some of the administrators and family engagement facilitators and our staff in our migrant education department are making personal phone calls in many, on many occasions. Helping the families complete the Google form and the registration if they've got them on the phone and they say, yes, I want to go. Then we just help them right then and there. So I'm trying to make as personal a contact as possible to make sure the programs get full and that we fill them to their max capacity and families have the opportunity to make a choice.
So good to hear. And if you have resources that you can share with us that we can, you know, connect and we hear from families as well, how to direct them, how to better handhold through the process.
And I would just.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to add, and I think I think maybe Dan Bigelow perhaps in the commented, and it's true. The materials are also, although we didn't translate them in all languages that our families speak, it is in English and Spanish. So we made sure that the communications are bilingual.
Great. My my second question, I know we're we're talking 4,000 plus. Are we at all meeting the demand? Are we hearing, are we getting a lot of requests? I know that every every day I drop my kids off, I'm hearing, you know, what about summer program? When are we going to be starting? When are we going to hear information? And again, these are from a lot of families that don't normally participate or access the the programs that we offer. But now that we have, you know, expanded, this is something that's interesting.
Yeah, I think that that is hard to say. I I think I I do believe that we have provided a variety of options. And I do believe that between the jump starts that will be site specific for the family that wants to do something kind of close to their school or families that want a different option that that we are providing a variety of opportunities. I don't know if we're meeting the needs of all that would be interested. I I hope. And and I, and that is my my goal and my hope that we are. And if we see that the programs fill and we have the ability to expand capacity and and that opportunity arises, that I could, I can assure you that we will do so.
That was my follow up question. That was my follow up question to it. And I'd love the jump starts. I I you know, wish that every, hope that every, every family that has an interest in, you know, the the quick transition as we return to school, participate in it. My last question is around, you know, maybe putting some type of emphasis. I know we we do this every summer. But on nutrition and lunches and and meals available for families.
Absolutely. And we are super grateful for for Ed Burke and his team and their commitment to making sure no child goes unfed. And so at all of the programs, we will provide meals. Like I said, for Lampas, we will pack the snacks and the and the lunches and and they will head on the bus to those locations. So that is a priority as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much, you guys, for everything.
You're welcome, Mr. Sheffield. I'll just add in my conversation with CNS today, when I was talking about the high school Nacellus programs, we also looked over the whole list of programs. And Ed Burke tends to use a hip hop phrase, most deaf. He basically said, you're going to be there for all these kids, most deaf. That was his response.
Director Manieri had a question.
Yeah, I actually have a couple of questions, but thank you for the wonderful presentation. It was really visually appealing. So thank you for that because we get a lot of PowerPoints. So I have a few questions. My first one is around evaluation of these programs. So how are we, how are we evaluating them? How are, how are we seeing whether or not they're making an impact? Are we hearing from students and their families after, you know, I'm just curious to know how we're seeing the the data or how we're collecting the data around effectiveness of these programs.
May I begin, Ms. Dillon, or would you like to start?
Of course.
My, thank you. Very nice of you. So thank you, Ms. Manieri, for the question. I appreciate it. So obviously you mentioned, you know, the first thing you've mentioned data. So some of the programs that are academically inclined will be collecting obviously data. And as we do in our September updates and presentations, we'll we'll present the information to the board. But you hit something very important. And I was talking to Mr. Missouri about it yesterday. And I, you basically mentioned what I was talking about, which is that every metric should include a qualitative and a quantitative aspect. As a matter of fact, when you go through upper graduate programs for to be an educator, you learn about both for a reason. Because they're extremely important in different ways. So I would think a metric that we should include would be hard data. And then, you know, the qualitative data. And so that might require us to do some interface with the experience. What was that experience like? And to gather voice about that. I don't know if it's been something, Ms. Dillon, that we've excelled at in terms of the qualitative side in the past. But I'll turn it over to you to to pick up there.
No, I would agree. I would, I would say that I will be honest in saying that this would be an area where we could do better. You know, we we try, we will always, we do pre and post assessments, academic assessments. I know in our elementary programs, migrant education, that is a key component also as well of the program. I know with Lampas there, they will be doing kind of post surveys as well. So I think that's something that in the, in the, in the month ahead, as we're planning and fine tuning some details and working with the administrators that we can, we can make sure is in place. It's probably, but it's been important every year, but I would say considering our circumstances and what our students have experienced is probably more important than ever to get that data.
And I would dovetail, Ms. Manieri, and the fact that sometimes we take for granted the qualitative data and we don't share it. And what I mean is we get stories all through the summer. Or we get these wonderful stories at the end of a program about something that happened in Project Make One Week. And we just fail to convey that. We're like, oh, that's so exciting. And but we kind of like share that joy with each other and we don't go, let's capture that and formalize that and share that with the Board of Education.
I I do think that we need to incorporate, you guys, I know I'm a broken record, but we have to integrate the universal assessment that Steve's creating in the summer. So let's use that screener in the summer as a part of the data. Second thing is collect the qualitative and just so the board knows, we'll collect the qualitative data and we'll get help from doctoral students to code it so that we can turn it into information that is easy to understand and use to help measure. So that, so that's what we're going to do.
That's great. I love to hear that. Yeah, that kind of visual representations of data, even if they're, you know, quotes from students that are really impactful, going back to that qualitative data that that can go a really long way. So I appreciate that effort. And and I'm, and I'm really excited to see that. I I love to to see those kinds of materials that that really relay like the effectiveness of a program. So a couple more questions, if that's okay. I don't know if we have this data with us now, but I would be really interested in knowing how many students kind of access the programs continuously or they come back versus how many students are are new each year to to these programs.
Okay, we can definitely bring back that data, Director Manieri.
Thank you. And then my last, actually, I have two more questions, but I hope they're not too long.
No, it's okay.
Though I'm I'm also wondering, just kind of thinking about data. For me, in my work, data is also really important for the sustainability of a program. And so I'm wondering, you know, how can the board help, help you all to elevate the data and elevate these stories for the for the sustainability of these programs?
Yeah, I I think those, that is a wondering that the team will need to take back because that's huge. What whatever the stories we create out of the data, how can we use the board basically to help spread the message? So the team, let's add that to the, our questions and as a part of planning.
And then my last question, it kind of goes along with Director Sheffield's comment and also the comments of President Juárez earlier in in our meeting about engagement with parents who don't necessarily know how to navigate our systems for signing up for these programs. So my, I guess my question is, have you identified any gaps in that area and and how can we work towards solutions?
So I'll start answering that, Director Manieri. I think we've sort of had a year of practice of how to try to address some of those gaps, right? And sort of seeing even how we address the thousand. I mean, it's more than, we do have meetings coming up with DAC and DLEC, right? But it's also about being able to reach out to parents differently, even if it's meaning that, you know, we as administrators or or planners of these programs, specifically with some of our targeted programs, are reaching out to families to say, look, we have these offerings. We have this availability. This is something that you might be interested in. I know too that it's important to share with families that we have different types of options. We have hybrid and also distance learning because I know that that's also important for some of our families. And so I think that's our responsibility, just as we have been responsible in trying to reach out to kids or track down kids or getting, you know, families to fill out paperwork. We've really had to learn those different ways. And part of that is just around being able to do it differently. I know that one of the things that Steve's group has really been working on is getting out and doing home visits. And so we're not opposed to that. If especially with some of our targeted summer programs. Not just because we need to make numbers, but we want to make sure that we are providing opportunities for kids who really need it.
Thank you. And thank you for your work.
I I think that we've discovered that the old fashioned snail mail is actually kind of effective. So so that's one area that it's it's proven to be effective. I think the other thing that we survey or I survey, I ask parents all the time, DLEC parents, are you accessing, is parent square working for you? And many of them are saying yes, because it texts messages where you can get messages. So we should, Rick, we should look at some data on that, more in depth data, because we can gather it with parent square just to also see. So and I want to bring up the fact with that, Dr. What Dr. Guzman said about the expanded learning is prioritized for students who need the support most. That's the priority. And that's the priority in which we will go. If if we are limited by the number of teachers we have who join us this summer. And so it's a big call out too for teachers in our district, outside of our district. Please come and teach summer school with us. We are paying per diem. I'm going to say it right out loud. Like even though it's not ratified yet, it's in the process of being ratified because we know your summer is precious, but we also, and we value your time. And so please, the applications are out. Come join us. You saw how fun. Look what we're doing.
All right, we are going to Director De La Cruz. Yeah, I just had one one follow up question to to tag on to Director Manieri's question around kind of targets. Are you, are you holding spaces for specific numbers of kids? Do you have kind of like income restrictions? And you kind of setting aside or focusing on kids? I I know that when these programs open, they can get overwhelmingly full by people who jump on easy, quick signups kind of early in the process. I just wanted to hear more about kind of how you're creating space for those folks who might need some more time and some assistance in signing up.
It's contingent. The money, really, this funding is contingent on just on doing just that. So I'm sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 please. I was just going to say that. That's why many of our programs, we are very careful and thoughtful about making sure that we say to a site, you have these many, this many seats. And that is to make sure that students from our campuses across the district have opportunities that principals and their teachers can think thoughtfully about students that would most benefit or in most need of a particular program. And that's why it's good to have a variety. So although there are a few programs that I would say are kind of open wide, many of them are very much targeted and for those reasons, to make sure that the students who would not maybe as readily access it but need it are reached out to.
Can I ask for the graciousness of the board for me to add one last thing I left out?
Go ahead, Tim. That's okay.
Why, thank you. I've been later in the agenda, so I've cut things short. So I'm going to take advantage of our number two slot here. I did not mention, but I know it moved forward today, and I'm remiss to not say this before I leave, that we're planning on having our wellness center and school-based therapists, four, four school-based therapists involved in all of our programs. So if there's also maybe a heightened need for some social, emotional support and mental health, well-being, we have that as part of our programs, too. And I failed to mention that earlier, so I apologize.
Thanks. Thanks, Tim, for that. And I think what I'm hearing from the board is, let's be intentional and formalize what it is we are allocating for what group of students and where. So let's get that together and let's put it as an information item for our next board meeting. Because that's what I think I'm hearing from the board. Okay.
Board, we need a time extension.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Who was that second?
Manieri.
All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no opposed. All right, we are going to go to public comment on item E11.
Members of the comment, public who would like to comment on item E11, please raise your hands at this time. And it looks like our first comment is Jess Sheel.
Hi.
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi. Critical race theory is the cancer of education, indoctrinating an entire generation of younger generations to genuinely believe that it's morally correct and judged to judge people based on the color of their skin. It's incredibly racist, but the supporters do not care. Teaching our children to feel shame as if they were born white, that they are proud of what is wrong with our country, to hate America and themselves and their families, teaching children who are born not white that their white friends are fault for any problems they may face. If you allow children to be taught to be victim all their lives, you're setting them up for failure. No one will ever hire them. They will be doomed to always be, in fact, be a victim of the race obsessed theories in their head. Face history, ourselves, woke culture, America.
President Fong.
Next speaker, please.
Next is Robert Johns.
Hi, my name is Robert Johns, a school psychologist with the preschool program. I'm wondering what extra learning opportunities are going to be made available to students with disabilities this summer? I do see that we have extended school year. However, this is a yearly federally mandated program that was meant to minimize learning loss during a typical school year. I would expect that an equitable summer program would provide more than what is just usually provided. There was mention of a site jumpstart program that doesn't seem to overlap with the extended school year days. And I'm first wondering if this program will be available for infants, toddlers, and preschoolers that we serve within the district? And more generally, will this program be accessible to our students with disabilities? Especially those with extensive support needs and those in special day classrooms? Are there going to be any additional staffing to help with needs such as toileting, feeding, self-injurious behavior, things like that? I know that these programs will be planned by individual schools, but please consider mandating that schools make their programming accessible to all students. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Adrian Juárez, and we have Mr. Bigelow here to translate as well.
Senor Juárez, yo estoy disponible para usted. Y puede comenzar cuando esté en la junta.
Sí, estoy listo. Si me escuchan.
Sí.
Okay. Gracias por todo el trabajo que han hecho los programas que han presentado esta noche. Realmente creo que son programas que se han ofrecido en otros años. Estoy preocupado por una parte contento por estudiantes que han regresado en persona y que van a poder disfrutar o atender estos programas de verano, ¿verdad? Pero triste porque no estoy mirando como un programas de verano para los estudiantes que están quedando en casa aprendiendo a distancia. Y en esta área creo yo que hay dos estudiantes que son los aprendices del inglés y los que están incluyentes en inglés, son dos, ¿verdad? Y debemos tomar en consideración esto. Yo creo que nuestras familias no lo hacen por gusto de no mandarlos. Yo creo que cada familia tiene una situación diferente. Creo que se van a seguir quedando atrás académicamente. Entonces, ¿qué podemos hacer nosotros? ¿Qué podemos hacer para que ellos tengan un programa de verano a distancia también? Necesitamos ser un poco más creativos para traer algo para ellos, porque ellos no pueden estar en persona a disfrutar de estos programas, ¿verdad? ¿Qué podemos hacer realmente? Esa es mi pregunta. ¿Cómo podemos ayudarlos? ¿Ha pensado en algo?
Pues, sorry, I've been thinking the wrong way. Okay, so, taking it from the top. This is Mr. Juárez again, DLEC president, just reminding everyone. I wanted to thank you specifically for all the work you have done in all these programs that you've presented tonight. He says, in his opinion, these seem very similar to things that we've offered historically. And he's concerned that they're overly focused in students who can come in person. You know, it's good for these people that are able to come. But his concern is for those who are remaining in education, you know, in distance learning, who, for whatever reason or another, are unable to participate or just have no desire to participate in these things. And it's also important to take into account, you know, the effects of this, you know, especially with Yale students. You know, this is another layer of concern that, you know, everybody's situation is different. Every family has their reasons. And we're in a situation where people are falling behind. You know, and the question really is, what are we going to do for these people? You know, and as far as distance learning, we need to be more creative as a group, more creative in how we're going to respond to these. Because some people just simply cannot be in person. They just cannot. So we have to respond to that. Entonces, pasale.
Como lo mencioné hace un rato, llegan invitaciones de ciertos programas. Pero hasta en la parte de abajo, la información que dice el distrito de Santa Rosa no se hace responsable por las actividades, no son respaldadas por el distrito. Entonces, me gustaría eso, que hicieran un programa que siga respaldado para ahorita, para nuestros estudiantes que están aprendiendo a distancia, incluyendo incluyentes en inglés y aprendiz de inglés. Creo yo que les beneficiaría, tal vez no en un 100% algo perfecto, ¿verdad? Pero algo que ellos estuvieran en este periodo de vacaciones o que van a estar libres, ¿verdad? No sé si algo se puede hacer al respecto con esto. Y si no, pues vemos, no sé, qué podemos hacer, cómo podemos ayudarlos a ellos, a nuestras familias, ¿verdad?
So he said that recently, as he mentioned before, he received, you know, the list of an invitation to these various programs. You know, but at the bottom, at the very bottom, it says, you know, it has a little disclaimer. You know, Santa Rosa City Schools isn't responsible for, you know, what is taught in these programs. You know, the standard disclaimer at the bottom. And then he returned to his discussion about what about for these distance learning? There doesn't seem to be an obvious option for distance learners, including, you know, your English learners. And nothing's ever going to be 100%, of course. But during this free time, this time that's available, that we should make use of it. And then he went on to say that, you know, he doesn't know, but, you know, he personally doesn't have the answer, but that there should be something.
Yo creo que va a ser todo por el momento. No sé qué podemos hacer, ¿verdad? Realmente estoy preocupado por eso mismo. Algo tenemos que hacer.
He says, okay. He says, that's pretty much all for now. You know, again, he doesn't really, what can we do? You know, he says, we have to do something.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. And our next comment is John Navarro.
I just had to unmute myself there. I just want to thank the presenters for that wonderful presentation and the district for putting so many wonderful options for kids this summer. But I am concerned that there doesn't appear to be many enrichment options for those who are too afraid to come back. Kind of seems like an afterthought. I don't understand how that's equitable. The signups are starting now and school starts just in a couple of weeks. And if it's too dangerous to go back to school full-time now, why will it be safe in just a couple of weeks? The board's best judgment has been to limit in-person experiences for the past two months. Why do they think this is okay when we're not in school now? Thanks.
Thank you. And it looks like we have no more hands raised.
All right, board, last comments, and this is an action item.
Director McCormick has her hand up. President Fong. Director, Vice President McCormick has her hand up.
Yes.
I would just like to make a motion to approve the approval of the 2020, 2020, 21 in-person extended school year program.
Second.
Okay, that was motion by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Mr. Floris, Trustee Flores. Any other discussion, board? All right, Renee, you going to take that vote for us?
Director López.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Aye for me.
Oh.
I've...
So sorry, my mistake. Director Medina.
Aye.
Thanks for speaking up, Director Medina. We know that you actually had to travel someplace, so thanks for being with us still. All right, moving right along. We are, thank you so much, Tim and Kelly. And Dr. Guzman. Thank you. We're at item E3.
Okay, I think we're bringing over Cindy, Director Cindy Brennan. While Director Cindy Brennan is coming over, because we are getting short of night, that doesn't mean we are short on recognition for our guest teachers, for our administrative professionals, for our teachers, for our nurses, for our classified employees. So you will be hearing a series of resolutions in honor of these staffs. And what I wanted the board to know is that earlier in the year, we purchased for all staffs these masks. So everybody has their mask that they're not putting on. And so so that we could be, you know, give something that is a little bit more meaningful instead of the normal cookies that we can't really have cookies right now and share them. We provided these masks for all of our staff members to, in recognition for how we want them to be safe and how we appreciate them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Brennan to start off with the classified, no, excuse me, the guest teacher appreciation.
And this is E2? I'm sorry, I said the wrong one.
This is... Yeah, well, now it's E3, but it's E2.
You're trying to confuse me. Good evening, Dr. Kittlemore and members of the school board. As I look through the list of our guest teachers, I want to take a moment to thank all of them for embracing and helping to overcome our present-day educational challenges. There is no other year in recent history where we have relied as heavily on our loyal, talented, and dedicated group of substitute teachers. In recognition of this important place that they hold in our district, from here on out, they will be called guest teachers. We are fortunate to have over 250 guest teachers who regularly work at Santa Rosa City Schools. Many of them have served our district for more than 25 years. In fact, nearly 20% of our guest teachers have been here more than 10 years. Also, it's not uncommon for our retired teachers to come back and join us in the role of a guest teacher. Our guest teachers are well-rounded and well-educated. More than 50% of our guest teachers have an additional single or multiple subject credential on top of their emergency substitute credential. They carry daily responsibilities of instruction, management, and supervision of students. Most guest teachers have the added challenge of not being able to work with students on a long-term basis while being responsible for ensuring that each day is used productively. They are often called upon at a very early hour or at the last minute to come in and teach our students for the day. Being a guest teacher can be a challenging job, even for the most experienced person. More than ever, we are amazed by our guest teachers' commitment, ingenuity, resilience, passion, and strength. They have had to, along with their permanent teacher colleagues, transition from normal teaching to remote learning and back again. All of this while they, too, have experienced the effects of the pandemic in their own families and personal lives. Thank you to our guest teachers who continue to be an integral and essential part of our educational team. We recommend that the board approves this resolution to recognize our guest teachers.
Yes, board, thank you so much, Director Brennan. Board, questions? Now we're going to move to public comment.
Members of the public, if you would like to comment on this item, please raise your hands. And President Fong, there are no hands raised.
We do very much appreciate our guest teachers, and we count on them, and they love the kids, too. All right, this is an action item, board.
Director McCormick has her hand up.
I see that little hand up there in the corner, Director McCormick.
I would like to enthusiastically make a motion that we approve the resolution recognizing our guests and substitute teacher appreciation in May 2021.
Second.
Okay, so that was a motion by Director McCormick and seconded by Director Manieri. Renee, can we have that vote, please?
Director López.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much, Cindy.
Okay, Director Brennan is going to do the next two, correct?
Yes. Are we ready?
Yes, go ahead.
All right.
Yes.
So, as the district makes its transition to CalPERS as our medical insurance provider for our SRTA confidential supervisory and management employees... for our SRTA confidential supervisory and management employees, we are presenting two resolutions to the board tonight. The first resolution is to adopt less than half-time benefits access for our management, confidential and supervisory employees. This will allow Santa Rosa City Schools to continue to offer medical insurance to our employees in these groups who work less than half-time. This is consistent with our current district practice under our Kaiser Medical Plans for these employees. In order to offer medical benefits to less than half-time employees, this resolution is required by Calpers. By passing this resolution, we will be able to continue providing access to quality medical plans and the prorated district paid subsidy for employees working less than half-time. We ask the board to approve this resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Seeing none, we're going to open it to public comment at this time.
If anyone would like to comment on this item, item E3, please raise your hands. And there are no hands raised.
Any discussion, board? Vice President McCormick?
I'd just like to make a motion that we approve the resolution electing to adopt less than half-time benefits, Calpers for management confidential and super. My eyes are going, supervisory employees, can't read, sorry.
A second.
Renee?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Thank you, Renee. Did you vote President Fong?
No, I, I got stuck on Medina. Okay, thank you, that passes. I even missed who did the second.
Steph, Director Manieri.
All right, we are on action item, I don't know, I'm just going to call it what it is in the agenda right now, it's four.
Correct. Director Brennan?
Thank you. This second resolution is to adopt less than half-time benefits access for our SRTA employees. This will allow Santa Rosa City Schools to continue to offer medical insurance to our employees in this group who work less than half-time. This is consistent with our current district practice under our Kaiser Medical Plans for these employees. In order to offer medical benefits to less than half-time employees, this resolution is required by Calpers. By passing this resolution, we will be able to continue providing access to quality medical plans and the prorated district paid subsidy for employees working less than half-time. We ask the board to approve this resolution.
Questions from the board? Let's go to public comment on this.
Members of the public would like to comment on this, item E4, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
So, this is an action item for our discussion board?
I move to approve the resolution electing.
Vice President.
Oh, sorry, I just went ahead.
Go ahead, Director Manieri.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the resolution electing to adopt less than half-time benefits for Calpers SRTA employees.
A second.
Okay, so that was seconded by Director De La Cruz.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Renee. And thank you to Director Brennan for all her work with the switch over to Calpers, tremendous amount of work, so she probably can't hear me because now she's in, she's in ether space, but thank you, Director Brennan. Okay, next, we are on the resolution in recognition of administrative professionals, and I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Chanel.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamura. Good evening, Board President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, members of the board and attendees. We are honored to present to you tonight Resolution 2020-21-66, proclaiming the recognition of administrative professionals in May 2021. To show its appreciation of the work carried out by its classified and confidential administrative professional staff, Santa Rosa City Schools would like to highlight the important role of its administrative professionals and their importance to the success of our students. We celebrate our administrative professionals tonight during the month of May and all year long. And with that, I will hand it over to you, President Fong, thank you.
Board, do we have any questions? I see no questions, and let's take public comment on this.
Members of the public would like to comment on item E5, please raise your hand.
Okay, I have all the plans.
President Fong, there are no hands raised.
All right, board, this is the next item.
I'd like to make a motion in favor of the resolution for administrative professionals.
A second.
Again.
Okay, so that was motion by Allegria De La Cruz and seconded by Director Manieri.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Okay, I know this is in the place, but I neglected to say this, really, the administrative professionals, again, essential workers doing a lot of work and we appreciate you unseen, unsung. We need you, you. Aye. All right, that passes. Yay to the administrative professionals.
Yes, if it was not for Renee Jackson, I would not have come to work in Santa Rosa City Schools, so. Renee Jackson, Jackson, it's all your fault. Okay, next, a resolution for teacher appreciation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Guzman. You're muted.
Well, there, I would like, what, $3,000?
Yes, and you can't leave until you pay up.
Dang. So thank you, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong, members of the board. It is a huge honor that I get to present the resolution for teacher appreciation week, May 3rd through 7th. Our teachers contribute to our students. They're responsible for educating and encouraging our students to become the next generation of eventers, entrepreneurs, public officials, first responders, professionals and service providers so that our community continues to grow and flourish. And they should be acknowledged for the immense amount of work and lift that they did during this pandemic year. We are very, very proud of our teachers and we are very grateful to their work. And we honor them not only through this week, but through their entire year. And with that, I turn it back over to the board.
You're here.
Yes. Board, do we have any questions? We'd like to hear from public comment, please.
Members of the public who would like to comment on item E6, please raise your hands. There are no hands raised.
Discussion board? Director McCormick?
I would just like to make the motion that we approve the resolution for teacher appreciation week, May 3rd through 7th, that's next week.
A second.
All right, moved by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Director De La Cruz, and I will say thank you to our teachers.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, with gusto, with gratitude, all that, yes, thank you. All right, we're moving on to the resolution recognizing national school nurse.
Yes, and I'll turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Mazzara.
Thank you, President Fong, Dr. Kitamura, members of the board. We would like to bring to you a Resolution 2021-69, recognizing National School Nurse Day on May 8th, 2021. As we all know, the importance of a school nurse to a school site team, everything from helping in the community access mental, mental health concerns. They are a strong link to the classroom and curricular and teach classes as well. But this year, we have known particularly important how nurses have shown their importance with the COVID-19 pandemic, helping our students and our staff stay, stay safe, return to school and really giving us a strong connection on the reality between science and what is practical, and with a great appreciation, we want to recognize the School Nurse Day on May 8th. And that'll turn that back over to President Fong.
Board, questions? We have, I think, how many nurses now, Assistant Superintendent Mazzara?
We're seven with a higher than an eighth.
Oh, everyone's precious, yes.
And.
When I, when I, go ahead.
As you said, when you were principal, we had four.
Yeah, and we were running around then, so you, I know seven and I know, wow, stepping up.
Yep, yep, another goal.
All right, um, we are, would like to take public comment right now.
If members of the public would like to comment on this item, E7, recognizing National School Nurse Day, please raise your hands. And our first comments, Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening, I just wanted to recognize the work of our nurses again this year. I also look forward to the day in the hopefully very near future where Santa Rosa City Schools is fully staffed with nurses, where we are meeting the recommended student to nurse ratio, which we are not quite close to at the moment. And I look forward to a day when elementary schools get nurses more than one day a week because we have hired enough staff. Eight is an improvement, but it is not anywhere close to enough. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next comment is Nicolo Atup, a school nurse.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and our wonderful board members. My name is Nicolo Atipman, I'm one of the district school nurses. I want to take this opportunity to appreciate and congratulate all the school nurses, but I also wanted to thank the leadership of Mr. Steve Mazzara, Ms. Sonia Rondrop, and I also wanted to include our COVID coordinator that have done so much in this, and that would be Ms. Kaitlyn Wayhall, I want to appreciate you, thank you so much. And also, I'm going to take this opportunity to, to say that I support our, my brothers and sisters, the classified workers, you know, we are only seven, eight nurses and without our classified brothers and sisters, that helps us, we are nothing. So thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nico.
And our next comment is Pam Kurbowski.
Good evening, my name is Pam Kurbowski and I am a PE teacher at Brookhill and Biella Elementary. And I also want to just thank and acknowledge all of our nurses as well. We are so grateful for you, you rock and you always go above and beyond the call of duty. So much appreciation, thank you.
Thank you, and there are no more hands raised.
All right, so back to the board.
Hold on one second.
President Fong, if I can make a correction, we had the date wrong on the, the paper resolution, it's May 12th. So I'd like to correct that resolution before we get a motion, please.
All right, so we are correcting that to May 12th, 2021. Vice President McCormick?
I just wanted to say that, you know, what would we do without our school nurses in any year? But in this year, it's just unbelievable. So, thank you so much for everything you do and thank you for everybody who serves the duties and roles of a school nurse, even if that's not your job title, because we would not have been able to reopen schools without your leadership and your service. So thank you so, so much for protecting our kids and taking care of our staff and our kids, thank you.
Did you make a motion too?
No, I was going to let someone else do it.
Director Flores.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all the nurses and the health techs, okay? And I'd like to make a motion to approve for a solution recognizing National School Nurse Day, May 12th, 2021.
A second.
Okay, thank you, Director Flores and Director Manieri. Renee, can we have that vote, please?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you so much. We're moving on to item eight, which is resolution for Classified Employee Week, which, yes, we heard a lot from the classified employees tonight and we are right behind you.
Yes, so I'll turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Nettson.
Thank you, good evening, members of the board, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura. I am happy to be able to present Resolution 2020-21-70, recognizing May 19th through 25th, 2021 as Classified School Employees Week. It goes without saying, even as we heard tonight, our classified employees play a vital role and contribute every day to the success of Santa Rosa City Schools, even on a, on a normal year, by whatever definition. And certainly over the course of the last year during the pandemic, taking on all sorts of challenges and opportunities on a daily basis at our schools. Meals served, safety precautions implemented, district business operations and ensuring continuity through this time. So on behalf of administration, we'd like to thank our classified employees, and I'll turn this over to the board.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Nettson. All right, board, questions? Moderator, we can take public comment now on this?
So if there are members of the public that would like to comment on this item, E8, please raise your hand at this time. And Micah Carlin Goldberg is the first.
Good evening, school board, and anybody who happens to still be listening at this rather late hour. I appreciate the words, but words without action are hollow. Your own words in the past have shown that the school board and the school administration knows that they need to be paying our CSA brethren and sisterin more than they currently are. You had your own resolution supporting a minimum wage of $15 an hour for your own staff, which you had to pull for, I believe, legal reasons over a year ago. Um, funnily enough, during this board meeting, I learned a new phrase that I like way more than living wage, because living wage is poverty wages, honestly. We need to give our staff a thriving wage, a wage where their families can thrive, where they are not living paycheck to paycheck, and that is not $15 an hour, that's not even $20 an hour. Right now, any one of our yard supervisors, who we do not have all those positions filled, who make $13 and a penny, could quit our district and walk down the street from my school and start at $17 an hour in and out. They could, all of our instructional aides for our spec classes could quit today and go work to stove for a $4 an hour pay raise. Words are hollow without actions. You have the opportunity to take action this year in your negotiations with CSA and give them a thriving. and give them a thriving wage where we will stop hemorrhaging staff members and stop having empty positions for years on end, because people will be paid enough to be able to, quote one of my CSA brethren and sisterin, be able to afford to work for our district. Because right now, there are so many people who cannot afford to take our jobs because they simply do not pay enough. Respectful words mean nothing without respectful actions. Thank you.
And the next comment is John Navarro.
Hi, board. John Navarro, small vocal parent here. I just want to say thank you to all the classified employees of the district. We saw you anytime we had to go get books, any supplies for school handouts. We see you every day when we drop off our kids, when we pick up our kids. We want to say thank you. We understand that you make our schools run right now. We'll see you are the ones that are actually implementing the COVID mitigations, keeping our kids safe, keeping staff safe. We want to say thank you. I want the board to actually appreciate the classified staff. We found the time and money to give teachers a bonus for doing concurrent work. I think you need to give the equal bonus to classified staff for doing concurrent work this entire school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no other hands raised.
All right, board, any discussion? We'll take a motion. Vice President McCormick.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for Classified Employee Week.
A second.
Okay, so that was by Director Mani, Vice President McCormick, and seconded by Trustee Manieri.
And Director Flores has the turn.
Yeah. Director Flores.
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to say that I think it goes without saying that the entire board recognizes all the work that our classified has done throughout the pandemic and before the pandemic. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, we work diligently to make sure that our classified staff are respected. So I just want to echo that, okay?
I echo that, ditto. And Director Medina has his hand up.
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to add my, you know, respect and admiration for classified staff. You know, for those of you that don't know, my mom worked as a custodian for more than 13 years for the district. I have a deep appreciation for classified staff, but I did want to just clarify something that was stated. And that's in relation to like the resolution that came up. The, it was not pulled for legal reasons. It was pulled because the CSA leadership did not want to support it. So I just want to clarify that because so much of what we constantly hear is that we don't appreciate our classified staff. And I wanted to make sure that that was clear, because I know that all of us, I'm confident that all the members of the board have a deep appreciation for our classified staff. And I hope that these negotiations end up demonstrating that. But thank you, and I'm going to vote in support of this motion for sure.
All right, we can take that vote now. It was moved by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Trustee Manieri.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Absolutely, yes.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're moving on to action item nine, resolution in support of National Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
I think Director Lopez and I are presenting that, so, um, thank you.
Sorry about that, it was on you, sorry. Sorry about that.
So for those of you who don't know, April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And this is an issue that is near and dear to me. I worked, one of my first adult jobs was working for Verity. I was the crisis line coordinator for their 24/7 crisis line. And then I also worked as a sexual assault victim advocate at the Family Justice Center of Sonoma County. And so I heard a lot of stories. And, and what really inspired me about that work is just the resilience of survivors and the journeys that they are kind of thrown into after experiencing maybe one of the most traumatic things in their lives. And so recognizing April is really a recognition of people who have, who have had these experiences. And we, you know, we throw numbers around and we talk about data, and our board is very data-driven. But it's important to recognize that behind every single number, behind every one and seven, one and three, there's a person. And so I just want to uplift that and also share that today is actually one of the most, it's a really important day to do this resolution too, because today is also Denim Day. And if you haven't heard about Denim Day, I highly encourage you to research about it. In short, it was a moment, Denim Day represents or acknowledges a really important moment in, in Italian democracy or Italian politics. There was an 18-year-old girl who was sexually assaulted by a 45-year-old man. And the Italian Supreme Court ruled that because she was wearing tight denim jeans, that, that, that obviously she had to have provided consent for the, for that experience, for that assault to have happened. So there, there are a lot of different ways that we can acknowledge Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I just encourage everyone to learn more about it. I, if, you know, if it hasn't touched us personally, I guarantee that we all know someone who has been touched by sexual violence. And the way that we carry ourselves around this conversation is really important, because we never know who's listening to us. So with that, I'll pass it over to Director Lopez, if there's anything that he'd like to add.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to add that as someone who has survived through sexual assault, this is something that's really important to me as well. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's an issue that sometimes we forget to talk about. And it's really, I think, as a school, there are certain things that may happen at our schools that we sometimes also like to avoid talking about. But I think it's important for us to recognize the importance of having these conversations of, you know, uplifting and helping the survivors and understanding the impact that our words can have. And anyone who's paid attention to the news recently would know that it's not just a national issue. It's very local, and there are people here that do these things and take part of these actions.
Thank you. So, so with that, we turn it back over to you, Superintendent Kitamora, and President Fong, and the rest of the board.
Thank you, Director Manieri and Director Lopez, for bringing this to our attention, to have this on the board agenda tonight. So, President Fong, I think we are ready for questions and public comment. You're muted.
It's the only time I've done that tonight. Director Medina, do you have a question?
I didn't know I had my hand raised. My apologies, but I'll wait for our public comments.
Let's go to public comment.
If there are members of the public who would like to comment on this resolution, item E9, please raise your hands. There are no hands raised.
Board comment?
We can comment now.
Yeah, I think this is such an important.
And then Director Medina and then Director Flores.
This is such an important action for this board to take, especially in light of the news and what has been happening in our, in our community recently. And I appreciate, you know, the, the leadership that this board is taking to make sure that we have these conversations with ourselves and with our kids. And I would just, you know, I think it's such an important step for us to, to recognize that survivors are everywhere. I'm, I'm a survivor as well, and so I very proudly and happily support this resolution and everything that we can do to continue ensuring the education for our kids and all the adults who are responsible for these kids helps to, to make sure that this doesn't happen and that those numbers go down in our district and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Medina.
Yeah, thank you. Um. One of the hardest things for me to deal with is oftentimes interacting with a lot of victims is just seeing how often they feel like it's their fault. You know, when Director Manieri was talking about the denim, well, you know, it feels like so, so often victims feel like it's their fault because of messages that they receive and, and, you know, there, there's no excuse for anyone to sexually assault anyone. You know, no means no. I think we need to do more work in ensuring that our, that our youth and people just in general understand that, especially our young men. And, and you know, it's, I just feel, especially right now, it's real critical for me to say that, you know, anyone that, you know, commits an act of sexual assault, you know, is a true piece of-ish. So I just really need to put that out there, because I've been very angered about everything I've been seeing lately. And, and one of my biggest fears is, is someone sexually assaulting my niece. And, and I don't know how I would react to that, because, because that is a truly heinous thing to do, to sexually assault someone. So I think this is a very important resolution, and, and I feel that we all should really put more work into ensuring that we do more education and more, anything we can do to make sure this doesn't happen. But thank you.
Director Flores.
Yes, I echo what everyone has said here. And also, I would be remiss if I don't mention the culture of silence, that it's so prevalent, especially in, in, in men, in the culture of men, and, and not talking about sexual assault that happens, you know, pretty much, you know, on a consistent basis. So, um, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we, we, we talk about this and that, you know, you see something, say something, or encourage, you know, victims to, 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 to talk to someone confidentially if they want to. But this needs to stop with, with, with everyone, especially the culture of men that perpetuate this sort of behavior. So, and, and it's up to us to start making sure that we stop that. We stop that sort of, you know, locker talk and objectifying people. So anyway, so that's my two cents on, on this topic. And thank you, Director Manieri, for bringing this forward, and Director Lopez.
And finally, I'd like to say, and read in the board report, this, this fact. Ages 12 to 34 are the highest-risk years for rape and sexual assault. That means our students in our classrooms. And sometimes we are the ones who know them the best. And when we cultivate relationships with them and they can trust us, the teacher, the counselor, the nurse, the classified person, anybody, adult who is there to listen, you may be the one, we may be the one that they tell, maybe nobody else. But that's because we are creating that strong emotional, strong mental wellness environment for our students to be able to tell. So this education is so important for them, and our relationships with our students are so important to be able to help our kiddos. All right, so this is, we need a motion on this?
Am I allowed to make the motion?
Yes, yes.
Please do.
I would like to. I move to approve the resolution in support of National Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Omar Lopez? Okay, so, good.
Can we have Omar Lopez second? We're gonna do that.
I would like to second the motion accepting the resolution in support of National Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
See something, hear something, say something, aye.
Director McCormick.
I just want to acknowledge Omar Lopez and Director De La Cruz for speaking your truth and sharing your story tonight in a very public and honoring way. And that will help others. So thank you, and aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you. E11 is an action item. Let's take a deep breath.
Yeah. Okay.
2021, in-person extended school year program.
No, we've already done that. So we're on number 10.
It's a public, it's a public hearing.
Number 10, resolution addressing disparities caused by the current district boundaries.
I got so lost on that, okay. Thank you.
No problem, no problem, no problem. This is the resolution being brought forward at the direction of the board after working through boundaries and phase one and phase two. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson. And I'm sure he knows I'll chime in if I need to, but I'm gonna, he, he, he did a lion's share work on working with legal counsel on, and our demographer on this. So, Mr. Edson?
Thank you. Good evening, once again. As Dr. Kitamora said, this is a resolution being brought forward in light of the work that took place over the fall and into the winter in Santa Rosa City Schools, as we addressed the current Cook Middle School, excuse me, students. CCLI becomes a single campus K8 for the 21-22 school year. And as we go through this, a bit of background, in August of 2020, we presented the board with a timeline that would look at school boundaries throughout the district, including the middle school boundaries for the transition, and bring that back in January for discussion. After further discussions with legal and our demographer, we came back in September with a two-phased approach, phase one being the middle school boundaries, and then phase two looking at a larger, or all of our schools, a larger area and impacts throughout the district. As we went through phase one with the middle schools, we learned a lot, right? Some of the ideas and outcomes that we thought we would have, we did. Others were new, including how exactly could we move school boundaries around in Santa Rosa City Schools to promote some of the work that we know that this board and administration and organization want to accomplish in the future? In January, we brought back those recommendations for the middle school to the board. And then we continued to have discussions with legal and our demographer on how to move forward in the most effective way to go through what would be considered phase two. Through those discussions, it became apparent that what we wanted to do as an organization probably would not be accomplished with simple movement of boundary lines. And with that, we worked with, with legal again, taking into account the board's priorities and MVP, along with input from some board members, to develop this resolution as the first steps on how we can look at equity, not first steps of equity, but in terms of work in lieu of redrawing all district school boundaries. So we're bringing this resolution forward. There's nine key points that are listed in the board cover, as well as the resolution that start to address and put emphasis with the district. that start to address and put emphasis with the district to do certain things and make certain decisions and look at things a bit differently with direction from the board. So with that, I will turn it back to Dr. Kudimara if she'd like to add anything before to the board for discussion or questions.
No, you did a great job, Deputy Superintendent. I think this is for the board's discussion. I think you can see very clearly where the resolution is. And the words that are in there in the resolution. I think it's now up to the board to determine are there any changes needed to it? Are there any additions that you'd like to see or is it is it is it good the way it is? Because it really is going to be carrying a message for the work ahead along with your MVP and the LCAP and site plans as we move forward. So President Fong, I turn it back to you.
Took a lot of thought and it will continue to take a lot of thought. Board, do you have any questions? Let's open it up to public comment at this point.
If there are members of the public who would like to comment on this item, this is E ten resolution addressing disparities caused by current district boundaries, please raise your hand. And President Fong, there are no hands raised.
All right, Board, do we have a questions? I mean, discussion?
Vice President McCormick has her hand up and then Amber Flores and then Allegria De La Cruz.
I just want to say that this is this resolution. You know, it's it's late and it's coming in on the end of so much dealings with the pandemic that I don't want it to get glossed over. We, this this issue is near and dear to my heart and when we really started to dive into like trying to like fix the boundaries and that would fix equity and it's much more complicated than that and I just, I really think, I just want to say that I really think that our next steps and I've looked at the resolution, but really our next steps on this really need to be focused on our our policies around open enrollment and allowing transfers to happen and what that looks like and why things look like that and finding some sort of balance between magnet programs and marketing, schools marketing themselves and and then not having that and having a high level of education and equitable offerings at every school regardless of where you live and really, I'm a big believer in neighborhood schools, like a big believer in that and the power of going to the school in the community that you live in and being a part, being an active member of your community that you live in. And so anyways, it's huge and it's something we need to tackle and it's not going to be an easy fix, but I really think when we get down to the heart of the matter, it's going to be, we're gonna have to our best shot at addressing this. And we do straight up have disparities caused by our district boundaries, just straight up, I'm gonna say it. And I think it's going to be around the policies that are attached to enrollment and transferring within our district, so. Yeah.
Director Flores.
These are more rhetorical questions. Okay, so just so you know, there were a lot of great, there was a lot of great information here, especially about targeted universalism. So a rhetorical question to you and to and to the cabinet would be, you know, how would that look like in 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 the next year or year and a half? How do we approach that? How do we implement a a way that is equitable or or target of universalism that includes, you know, the whole spectrum that we have here in 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 a school district? So like I said, these are rhetorical questions that I just want you to think about. I would love to hear more about that as to what our our next steps would be to implement something like that. So I don't expect an answer on this today, but.
Well, I do want to, I do want to answer it though in that because I think people need to to know what the next steps are. This is the basis for policy. And so if you, if if the board approves this and you want universal implemented, then we need to create the policy and we will create the policy. Then then we'll create the administrative regulations and that's the how. So first step is policy, then we'll create the how.
Well, thank you, thank you. I thought it was gonna be a lot more complicated because we had a long conversation, Diane, so I'm Dr. Kudimara. And then I just want to echo what McCormick said, that, you know, we should not gloss gloss over this because this is so important and this is something that it's up and coming and I know it's late, but it 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 needs to, it needs to be discussed and 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 I and I hope that we can have a maybe a study session where we can, you know, dive into this a little bit more deeply with more time. So yeah. Thank you.
Director De La Cruz.
Sure. You know, as as I'm reflecting on the name of the resolution, I think it's interesting for us to actually recognize and acknowledge the fact that it's not our district boundaries that are causing disparity, it's the fact that our community is segregated. And I think what we realized as we studied this is that no redrawing of our boundaries could address the inherent segregation in our community. And and that those challenges are larger than any school district decision. And that's what really moved us to be intentional about recognizing that this is about policy. And I think about Ayanna Pressley and her quote, that policy is my love language. And I think that, you know, that's really what I see this board doing in this moment is recognizing, you know, the power of our ability to create policy to address segregation. And and I I want us to acknowledge that that's what kind of inequity is, right, is is the different allocation of resources based on somebody's race. And our community is still one where, you know, people are allowed to live in certain parts of our community because of their income and that income is related to their race, is related to the history of our community and so like, it is a very macro conversation that we are kind of jumping into with our our eyes wide open and our hearts wide open. And I'm just really proud of this resolution and the ways in which we've acknowledged, you know, the the challenge before us and you know, and our and our desire to really address what it means to 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 develop an equitable program throughout our throughout our district as a whole. You know, I'm I'm really moved by conversations around targeted universalism and I think that we have examples of when that has really been successful in our program. And I think about CCLA and, you know, some of the work that we did to recognize that when we closed a public school in southwest Santa Rosa in a part of our community that needs actually more resources and more public institutions. We also created a real draw for a lot of families who otherwise wouldn't go to school in southwest Santa Rosa. And I just want to, you know, say that that's the kind of action that I'm I'm really excited about, you know, this board continuing to to investigate and to figure out how to get done. And I think we have seen from those amazing parents and those great families and those incredible kids and the school that CCLA has become and continues to grow into that, you know, that kind of approach that pulls kids and resources into these kinds of creative, you know, creative experience, you know, experiments in creating places that really prepare our students for success in the state of California and the United States of America that requires multiple languages and facility in, you know, moving between cultures and an ability to be curious and educated about how we how we live together and how we love each other and how we speak to each other. So I just, I'm you know, I'm excited about all of the policy conversations that I I I feel, you know, this board and and our and the and the power that we have because we love talking and working together and we love our community so much and we listen and talk with our community in ways that, you know, truly is transformative. And so I think that would be the, you know, like what I want us to just be inspired by as we undertake this resolution and recognizing that it's not a district boundary issue, but it's, you know, it's figuring out how to translate our love for our community into policy and and to create that kind of excellence as we move forward.
We're gonna move to public comment at this point.
We already did public comment on this item.
What time is it?
It's really close to eleven.
Ten forty-four, ten forty-four. So.
Okay, I will say this before we take this get a motion is that this this document, this document is going to live right next to our mission vision. Right? They go hand in hand. This is our work and I'm going to thank you, Diane. I think you wrote this.
No, legal counsel, legal counsel wrote it. I edited and actually Director De La Cruz helped me. So.
This is a beautiful document. It says a lot. It is rich. We are gonna use it. It's gonna be part of our template going forward and this will turn into policy. So I'm very grateful for this document.
I love it. And Director De La Cruz? Okay, everybody, translating our love for the community into policy. That is a soundbite times one hundred thousand. I love it.
I think this, this is the most unique, the most important, the deepest resolution that I think Santa Rosa City Schools has ever enacted. So let's enact it.
Let's not restart our laurels, that policy.
We have a lot of work. This is work. It's the work that we that we want to dive into.
This is just our map.
Director De La Cruz, would you like to make this?
I'd like to move to approve the resolution. Sure, I'd like to move to approve the resolution addressing addressing disparity caused addressing the disparities caused by segregation in our district.
Yeah, you can change it.
Second.
Right. Moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Vice President. Chill.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. All right, we're moving on to a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. And I do not want to forget that Director Manieri was the one that first said, this feels like a resolution. So thank you, Director Manieri. Okay. Yes, we are moving on to public hearing for the sunshine for CSA Chapter seventy-five and I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you, Dr. Kudimara. Because this is a public hearing, I believe I will reserve comment and wait for the next item.
Perfect.
All right, so public hearing is open.
If any members of the public would like to comment on item E twelve, Santa Rosa City Schools Sunshine Proposals for Contract Reopeners with CSA Chapter seventy-five, please raise your hands at this time. And our first comment is Margaret Boom.
Good evening. Two years ago, I stood up to speak at the board. Sorry, two years ago, I stood up to speak at the board meeting about the low wages our classified staff make. I talked about how both of my assistants have to work two jobs, get their benefits through Covered California and live in low-income housing. That despite working thirty-five hours a week at Montgomery. I mentioned that our childcare workers and yard duties were making the same as a starting wage at Taco Bell. This is no longer true. Our childcare workers make thirteen oh one an hour, two nineteen under Santa Rosa's minimum wage. The assistants in my room who serve students with the greatest needs start at thirty-six cents above minimum wage. The exact same job at the Sonoma County Office of Education starts at eighteen oh one per hour. We still have the same jobs open at Montgomery now as we did when I started, when President Fong was Principal Fong. The businesses around us keep increasing their wages and we just stay where we are, falling further and further behind the competition. We'll never fill jobs if we don't offer a competitive wage and we won't keep the employees we have if they have to work for a minimum wage or less. We need to par-classify a living wage that means starting at a minimum of fifteen an hour and raising classified salaries to clear us all jobs to be at least on par with what they'd make at other schools doing the exact same job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boom.
Thank you. Next is Tammy Afonso.
Evening once again. We would like to encourage the board to approve this item. We are a little confused. We we believe that it was sunshine a couple of months ago. So I'm not sure what happened there. Regardless, we want to move forward with our negotiations and get a living wage for the staff and the of Santa Rosa City Schools and move towards that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Afonso.
Next is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening. I know this is like the fourth time I've talked about this tonight, but we need to, it's that important. We need to do a better job supporting our CSA members. I want to encourage the board and the district not just to look at the lowest paid person, but to make sure that as we raise the wages of the lowest person to a thriving wage, preferably something well above twenty dollars per hour, that we raise the wages of all of the other people who already make more than them in a commensured amount, in a commensured amount, so that they, all the boats rise together on the ship as we make right what is currently wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is John Navarro.
Hi, sounds like the board just passed a resolution that Director De La Cruz rightly changed to addressing district segregation. Paying classified staff will help with district segregation. Start here.
President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Public comment is closed. We're moving on to Action I and thirteen, approval of the Santa Rosa City Schools District Sunshine Proposals for Contract Reopeners with CSA.
I'd like to move to approve the resolution, opening that some time proposed for CSA.
Second.
Any discussion, Board?
Adelante.
Okay, we'll take that vote.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Run consent items, approval of absent board members. Seeing none. Approval of personnel transactions, no, excuse me. Two through four and then six. That we pulled five and talk about it after. So let's do, let's do two through four, then six.
I'd like to move to approve consent items two through four and six.
Second.
Take the vote.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
We just found our hamster eye.
Oh, I was wondering what was going on. I knew something was happening.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
I'm taro, you found.
Director Sheffield.
Sorry.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. All right, let's talk about F5, Approval of Contracts, Dr. Ke Tamarra.
Yes, so I am pulling the contract for Gary Nelson Associates. This. In, in a. Conversation fraught with, sorry, I can't talk. President Afonso contacting me about questions about taking away CSA work through this particular contract. We are going to pull it so we can have further discussion about, about it. So that's why I'm pulling, pulling that contract. So the rest of the item can go forward except for that contract.
I think. Do we have questions on this board?
We have, we have, oh, we, there was, there is comment, yeah, but are there any question?
Yes.
Were there any board questions first?
Director De La Cruz, hand up. Now.
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, let's go to public comment on F5.
So we had two people that had their hands raised about F5 earlier in the meeting and I see one right now, Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening. I actually wanted to speak on two of the contracts that were on here, one of them being the one that Superintendent Kidem wrote pulled. I would hope that we would do our best to raise the wages of our CSA people so we can fill positions instead of having to pay consultants wages, consultants fees that would go. Well above what it would cost to employ somebody in our own district with an appropriate wage. The second contract that I wanted to speak to is the land pass. I think it is very awesome that our school district is spending the money to put several hundred of our students. Into science camp effectively over the summer. We've been doing that at Steel Lane for a long time. We have to fundraise about $11,000 for our sixth graders to go to science camp. And I look forward to the day when the district is paying for 100% of the cost for 100% of our sixth graders to go to school. To go to outdoor education, science camp. At Alliance Redwoods, which is where Steel Lane goes, or at whichever vendor they decide to go with. So I, I look forward to a day when our, our budget reflects our values better and where we don't have. Disparate treatment. I really do hope that this land pass contract, along with all the other summer school offerings. I know I heard you say that you were going to do your best to make sure that every student has equal opportunity. I just really, really hope that the, what the endpoint of who gets to take on this opportunity does not end up being inequitably distributed amongst our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Afonso also had her hand up earlier in the meeting, so. There she is.
Hello again. Sorry, I was a little confused on the raise and lower of the hand. So this, this item speaks directly to what we've been talking about for months. And that is the classified employees of Santa Rosa City Schools deserve to make a living wage. This contract. With the understanding that part of it goes to the business who has the employees that we are contracting or we're going to contract with. Receives a fee and then the employee receives their wage. I have no problem with the employee's wage. Problem that we have is classified employees of Santa Rosa City Schools is the person is coming in to do our work job at a higher rate. This is unfair to us. You're out, ours, our work is being outsourced. In the past, when there was a need for additional support in special services, special services reached out to us. And our members came over after work hours who didn't work eight hours a day. And were able to earn a little extra money by helping do filing, making phone calls for them and other clerical tasks. And the fact that we were not consulted prior to bringing in and, and outsourcing our work. Has been quite shocking for us, especially at this time when we are trying to increase our wages of our employees. But we're willing to go outside and hire outside groups to come in and do our work. So we hope through the negotiation process that this will be resolved. Thank you.
And President Fong, those were our two comments on F items.
So Diane, we are.
The motion would be to approve it. The motion would be to approve the contract without the Gary Nelson contract in it, removing that contract. And. The reason we are pulling it is for what President Afonso was talking about. We need to discuss this and backtrack it. So I, I totally hear what she is saying, so.
Vice President McCormick.
I was just going to make a motion to approve F5 with the removal of the Gary Nelson contract.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Trustee Allegria De La Cruz. Discussion Board. Seeing none, we can take that vote.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes, G1, Special Board Meeting held on April 12th, 2021.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the Special Board Meeting on April 12th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Approval of minutes of regular board meeting held on April 14th, 2021.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting, April 14th, 2021.
Second.
All right, motion by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Sheffield.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Are there any board member request for information? Okay, we are adjourned.
Hey, one minute over. You did it.
Disapuro.
Thank you.
Night, all.
Good night.